Jobs and Careers. Job seekers recently came out for a job fair hosted by the museum and council member Karen Price.
Here at the Lucas Museum have insisted on local hiring. We think it's going to be built here, we should be hiring from here. And so this is just an opportunity to give you a step up. This is not going to be the only hiring opportunity, but it's going to focus on you.
This is a local hire. It's number six of a series of local hire events that we've had since 2017. And what we're really looking is to get the community involved with different various trades on the project. And so anytime we can get anyone, whether it's electricians, laborers, carpenters, pipe fitters, iron workers onboard, we want to let them know what's here and we're looking for local hires to be on the project.
It's important because it provides not just a job opportunity, but a career opportunity. We heard several stories today about individuals who started working on the Coliseum project and then went into soccer stadium and then into another project. In other words, these are our career opportunities that we can change someone's life and we wanted to encourage them to get started early.
The last I remember, I was last sitting in these seats and now I'm speaking here at the program. I think it's a great opportunity that can open up for a lot of people.
I just want to say that we want to ensure that investments and opportunities include you.
For more info, visit lucasmuseumconstruction.org. A new program to help grow small businesses is launched. The city attorney reaches a settlement with a couple of vaping companies. And do you own any ivory? The L.A. Zoo wants you to turn it in as part of a national campaign. All this in City View.
Los Angeles City Councilman Marquise Harris Dawson and Paul Krokorian, County Supervisor Hilda Saliz in the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, announced the One LA Regional Collaborative, a program to help build wealth for small businesses and provide easier access to contract opportunities through training, technology, and consulting.
If you're wanting to start a business, if you want to learn about that, you can come here to the chamber for some information on that. And then One LA could be something that you look to move into. It's an opportunity to connect.
On the heels of recommending a citywide ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products, City Attorney Mike Fuer announced settlements with two vape companies over allegations they illegally marketed and sold to minors. In addition to $350,000 in penalties, each must now adhere to a myriad of strict regulations ensuring they do not advertise or sell to kids in California. The L.A. Zoo announced its participation in a national campaign to surrender ivory with the first Toss the Tusk event. The goal of this free public service event is to encourage the Los Angeles community to join in on the fight to save elephants from wildlife trafficking. Toss the Tusk gives the public a chance to safely dispose of their ivory items, ensuring it will never hold value in the black market. Officials say events like these can send a strong signal to the world that elephants are worth more alive.
We are dealing with an illegal wildlife crisis and this is an opportunity for the community to be aware of how they can make a difference.
A new art exhibit is shedding a whole new light on how we learn about history. This artist brings to life what it was like for Jewish people in pre-Holocaust Europe by taking viewers on a fascinating journey with a unique point of view.
So what you see behind me and all around is the work of an artist David Levkovsky. And his art documented life, specifically Jewish life.
His art depicts life before, during, and after the Holocaust and his time as a prisoner in Siberia. David Levkovsky is my great uncle. Him and his wife Rifka were my only surviving, besides for my grandfather, the only surviving family members.
You know, the old thing is we're doomed to repeat the history if we don't remember it. And, you know, in the Holocaust, you know, 13 million lives, 6 million Jewish lives snuffed out for what? For because of hatred. And then we see the hatred in the world today that exists. It's not just history if we're not careful and we're not acting vigilantly and we don't embrace our diversity and embrace each other.
We feel that Holocaust education needs to be relevant to the audiences today. And so we created the virtual reality model that you can literally step into the artwork and become part of the scene.
Shalom. I am David Levkovsky, the artist. I would like to welcome you to Gilna, the city of my youth. The year was 1929. I was just 23 and the world held so much promise.
Basically, we asked the question, what would it be like to step into the paintings? What did David Levkovsky want the world to see and why? And in doing so, it is the beginning of thought. This is what can happen when one person, one group treats another group as other, as different.
This is my grandfather, great-grandfather, my great-grandmother, and they were physically forced out. From there, they were moved into a ghetto and you just get this absolute feeling of sadness.
So when we had the first exhibits, parents said to us, I never knew this. I never have learned this history.
The first school at which we piloted our program, we went in and not a single student had ever heard of the Holocaust. And after our semester, these students were educating their community, their peers, and their families about David Levkovsky and the life and the time period in which he had lived.
Reseda came alive recently celebrating the Valley's creative community and showing some real Reseda love. We head over to the Fourth Annual Reseda Rising.
This event is the Reseda Art Walk and it is, it is part of my Reseda Rising initiative. This is our fourth year doing it. And the beauty of this event, you come to this event and you can feel Reseda and you can feel the artistic community flowing through your veins. It's a magnet for that kind of energy.
I like it here. I like the live music. I like the food and I like the atmosphere. It's great.
I think it's amazing just seeing all the different artists, being able to present their work and everything, being able to have spaces like this where you can create art yourself, just kind of experience the whole thing is really cool.
I don't do just shows in L.A. I've traveled all over the country and chose Reseda Rising because this is the best place for me to connect with the people of the 818. You know, there's no better place to connect with people who are practically my neighbors.
You know, Reseda Rising is obviously very successful exactly for these reasons. It brings the community together with art, with music.
This is the core of the Valley here in Reseda. And for too long it has been neglected and, and I have vowed and I am committed to tapping into that special energy here and raising it up.
From traditional street tacos to fusion-inspired and vegan tacos, there was a taco for everyone at the Silmar Taco Festival and folks came out in droves.
Well, it's a warm day, but we are cool out here in Silmar where we've got our first annual Taco Fest. And I mean, the crowd continues to come out. We've got something for everyone in the family to enjoy, but I'm really excited about the turnout today. At 12 o'clock when we opened, we, before we even actually formally opened, we had people lined up, ready to get in here. This is the first event of its kind here in the northeast San Fernando Valley and I'm so proud that we're able to activate this space in a way that no one else has.
I think my communities are really good. I think we're just one of the communities here in San Fernando, Silmar, that really stands out above the rest. And I really, I really appreciate the, you know, the councilwoman coming out and doing what she's doing, man. That's impressive.
One, two, three. So beautiful. I love looking at all the vendors, checking out all the food spots, especially here in Silmar. If we're able to come as a community and be able to eat together, listen to music together, it's such a beautiful thing. I love it. I love being here.
Well, I think there's no better way to celebrate the contributions of the Latino community than to do one of our most celebrated foods and that's tacos. And to be able to activate here in our community, a celebration of how rich and diverse our culture is, is a really proud thing for me to be able to do as the councilwoman for this area. And I look forward to producing more events like this that bring our community and our
Join the fun at an Alvera Street Muertos Art Walk, celebrate African-American art and culture, and manja manja. Get ready to eat and have some fun at the Italian Festival. All this and things to do.
Celebrating its sixth year, the Alvera Street Muertos Art Walk brings together artists from the greater Los Angeles community, selling original artwork, clothing, and more. The Muertos Art Walk is a hand-curated show designed to highlight the work of local and undiscovered artists. So shop small and shop local at the Alvera Street Muertos Art Walk, happening Saturday, October 5th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For details, visit alveraevents.com. Join Africa in America for its sixth annual original works showcase entitled "The Sounds of Blackness." This year, the event will shine a light on the soundtrack of the African diaspora, featuring original works from musicians, vocalists, and drummers. Don't miss the original works showcase "The Sounds of Blackness," happening October 5th at the Barnstall Gallery Theater in East Hollywood. For ticket information, visit africainamerica mag dot com. October is Italian-American Heritage Month and a time to celebrate all things Italian. The Los Angeles Italian Festival is a day to taste, hear, and experience amazing Italian food, music, and culture right here in the City of Angels. Vermont and Franklin is the place and October 6th is the day that everyone in Los Angeles is Italian. Join the festivities at the Los Angeles Italian Festival, October 6th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For ticket info, visit their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Umayman Rashid. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week.
report to evaluate the potential environmental effects of the proposed Citywide Cat Program that addresses free roaming, feral, or stray cats in the city? The city is requesting input from public agencies, residents, and other interested project stakeholders. A public meeting to receive comments on the draft environmental impact report will be held on Monday, October 7th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. at the Ramona Hall Community Center, located at 4580 North Figueroa Street, Los Angeles, California. Please visit laanimalservices.com, click About Us, and then click Citywide Cat Program to learn more about the program and on how to submit comments for review.
Come on, come on back over on this side.
Good morning, Mr. Blumenfeld. Do you have a presentation this morning?
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you all for coming together today as we declare this week E-Commerce Week in the city of Los Angeles. In the simplest of terms, e-commerce is the activity of buying or selling products over the internet. And since its origins, it has played a major role in reshaping the 21st century global market. Thanks to e-commerce, customers can browse for products anywhere and at any point in the day. I imagine right now as we speak, there is someone in this room on a device engaging in e-commerce and not fully listening to every word that I'm saying. It's a reality of today's life. But it's also a great way for L.A.'s local businesses to grow their companies and reach more customers than ever. As a councilmember, one of my top priorities has been helping businesses thrive in the city of Los Angeles. To help foster economic global growth, I have a community action team. I've got a number of them on different subjects. We call them Bobcats Community Action Team. And we have one for Business and Economic Development, which is comprised of 30 local business leaders and local entrepreneurs that go around, we help other businesses in the area. And we've noticed as a group that a lot of our local businesses that used to be pure brick and mortar, the reason they're surviving and thriving this day is because of e-commerce. Because they've realized that to expand their reach, they need to go online. You've got to remember, in Los Angeles, whenever you're a brick and mortar business, 99% of your potential business lies outside of the city of Los Angeles because you have the whole world at your fingertips. So if you can, if you can have a business here and project, you can be even more successful. Now, I want to start, I want to celebrate, as we celebrate the many innovations that have come through e-commerce, I'd like to recognize the CEO of Hawk Media, Eric Huberman, who's standing to my right, your left. He first reached out to my office to talk about this presentation. Hawk Media helps increase the profiles of many L.A. e-commerce businesses and they are here today to help recognize some of the many e-commerce businesses that represent and grow in Los Angeles. And I'll give him a chance to speak at the end. I also have a couple of folks to honor, some, some folks in my district who have really figured out how to capitalize on e-commerce and grow their businesses. Our first honorees, we want to talk about are Mark and his wife Amelia Nurdorf. They They run a great business called Soccer One, which is a premier soccer sportswear business and a warehouse in Canoga Park. They started their website Soccer One in 1993, in the early days of the Internet, and they've grown to become a national distributor of soccer goods, equipment, and educational materials. Besides being a national leader in the soccer market, Mark and Amelia have also encouraged their staff to give back to the community by volunteering for a variety of things, both as referees and coaches. And they also, even though they're in this world of e-commerce and have a, you know, brick and mortar presence in the district, they also find a lot of time to give back to the community in many other ways. Mark serves on my Economic Development Bobcat, has been President of the Canoga Park West Hills Chamber of Commerce. Amelia helped give back as the chairperson of the Salvation Army's Advisory Board Council for the Canoga Park Adult Rehabilitation Center. So they're both very active in the community, as well as active online in the world. We'd like to give both of you and the entire Soccer One team a certificate, which I'm going to give, a certificate to each of the honorees at the end, to keep the program moving. And the second folks I want to honor and mention is Golden Hippo. And there, I want to recognize Craig Clemens. He's here. And his entire team behind Golden Hippo. Golden Hippo is an e-commerce brand creator with its corporate office based in Woodland Hills. Since its founding in 2010, Golden Hippo has quickly grown to have over 900 team members and four locations. Golden Hippo partners with the world's top doctors and health experts to create innovative health and wellness brands. And Craig and his brothers, who founded Golden Hippo, have this mission to build an inclusive corporate culture that rewards innovation and entrepreneurialism. They have been a success at growing their band, brand in the West Valley and beyond through digital media marketing strategies. So there's a lot of ways that folks are able to capitalize on e-commerce and, in a very local way, have that benefit themselves, the community, and the world. Lastly, I want to mention Autocan. And I want to recognize, and Rebecca, I know is here somewhere, bring, come on up Rebecca. And I want to recognize the leaders behind Autocan. They are an international information and communication technology consulting firm that employs adults on the autism spectrum. They're really quite amazing. Since their inception in 2011, Autocan has established 15 offices in countries, including Germany, the UK, France, Switzerland, Italy, Canada, and the US. And recently, they opened up an office, and I was proud to be there at the ribbon cutting and to participate with them and the various folks who work there, who are on the autism spectrum, in the ribbon cutting to welcome them into Woodland Hills. And the secret to their success is recognizing and fostering employees' individual strengths. Persons on the spectrum often have enormous cognitive strengths that go unnoticed in other work environments. So they've figured out not only how to capitalize on the worldwide market through e-commerce, but when you go to their offices, they have sections that are especially for people who are sensitive to light, special sections for people who are working, who have different cognitive strengths that can be enhanced through the right environment. So today, we have with us, as I mentioned, the President of Autocan, Rebecca Bean. And we are so fortunate, and thank you for your inclusivity. So these are just three of the amazing organizations in the West Valley and in the city of Los Angeles that have used the Internet to gain a massive following. Now, I want to officially declare this week, kick this off as E-commerce Week in the city of LA. And before I give the three of you organizations a certificate, I want to give Eric from Hawk Media a chance to say a couple of brief words, and then we'll give the certificates to these companies. Eric.
I will keep it brief, but, you know, the motivation of this is we have such an incredible ecosystem to build e-commerce brands here in LA, and this is an opportunity to actually show the world what we're up to and actually bring that together, because in this situation, the tide will rise all ships. And the more we can build a community out of this industry that we have here and take advantage of it, the better we'll all do. So I really appreciate the support from the councilmen, from the city, and I'm excited to be able to put together next year, what will be a blowout year to bring together that community. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now the certificates. You know, and again, the important thing is really, a lot of times you think of e-commerce and you think of, well, what is that doing to our local community in terms of sales coming from elsewhere else? But this is a chance to flip that script and think about what can e-commerce do for us here in Los Angeles and really help us bloom? So, toward that end, I want to give Autocan, you guys a certificate. I'll take a group shot here. And Soccer One.
Thank you.
And Golden Hippo. And then last, I have a certificate here recognizing, a big one for the all of E-commerce Week, and this one is signed by not only myself, but all of the members of the City Council. I'll give that to you. We'll take a group photo, and let's give it up for E-commerce Week, folks.
Let's go ahead and start our meeting. Good morning, welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, October 2nd, and your City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum, let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Kirkorian, Lee, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present in the quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Go ahead and let's go run through the first order of business.
Approval, the minutes.
Okay, Ms. Rodriguez moves, and Mr. Ofero seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mr. Corretts seconds. What's next?
Madam President, there is a request to continue Item 6 to December 4, 2019.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Just go ahead and run through the items.
Items 1 through 3 are items noted for a public hearing. 1A, the department recommends reducing the lien to $9,994.16 as a result of partial payment and title fee adjustment and confirming the lien. And for Item 3, a motion is required for the public convenience and necessity matter. And Madam President, there are cards on 1 through 3.
Okay, let's go ahead and, um...
Hold that.
Go ahead and hold them on the desk?
Yes. And Items 4 through 33 are items which public hearings have been held. Item 19 requires a motion, that is an item with three committee reports, public works and gain reduction, transportation, energy, climate change, and environmental justice. There is a request to hold Item 19 and 23.
Okay, very well, members, are there any specials on these items? Okay, let's go ahead, um, on the remaining items, let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, what's next?
Next is Items 34 through 49. Those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objections, those items are now before us. Are there any cards?
Yes, Madam President, there are cards on all items 34 through 49.
Okay, let's go ahead and hold those items. What's next?
Next are Items...
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rodriguez, go ahead.
Fourth with, please.
Fourth with, number nine for Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Ofero?
Item 7, fourth with, please.
Item 7, fourth with for Mr. Ofero. Mr. Bonin?
When it's appropriate, Madam President, I'd just like to make a recognition announcement to some people in the audience.
Okay, let's just finish running through the agenda, we'll do that. Thank you.
Next, Madam President, are Items 50 through 52, and those are items scheduled for closed session.
Mr. Kirkorian?
Thank you, Madam President. Items 50 through 52 have all been considered by the Budget and Finance Committee. I'd like to ask that, for the moment, we hold 51 on the desk. Items 50 and 52 are settlements, and Budget and Finance recommends approval of those settlements according to the City Attorney's recommendations. Those can be done in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Members, are there any questions on 50 and 52? Okay, seeing now, let's go ahead and open the row on those items.
Madam President, may I read for Item 50, in the matter between City of Los Angeles and BKHM Partnership, there is a recommendation to accept a payment of $107,500 from BKHM Partnership. For Item Number 52, in the case entitled David Derousse et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to $6.7 million in settlement.
Okay, those items are now before us, Items 50 and 52. Let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Bonin, do you have a presentation, sir?
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. Colleagues, I just want to give a shout out to some people in the audience today from the California Nurses Midwives Association, if they could stand up for a second. Colleagues, as we know, midwives save lives. Well-trained midwives can help avert nearly two-thirds of all maternal and newborn deaths. But they do more than just deliver babies, they also provide comprehensive sexual and reproductive health services, and they assume a critical role in promoting health within communities. They do family planning and services and counseling, and they can also perform breast and cervical cancer screenings and a lot more. They do a whole bunch to advance the human rights of women and girls, and they provide one of the most cost-effective and culturally sensitive ways of achieving universal healthcare. So just on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and the City Council, I want to recognize you for your work and welcome you here to City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, welcome. Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Okay, we're going to be ready for our presentation. Item 34, if you want to come up to the table, please. Members of the Chamber of Commerce.
Yep.
Good morning.
Get myself here. Good morning, Madam President Martinez and distinguished members of the City Council of Los Angeles. On behalf of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, we are grateful for the invitation to be here once again to present our 2019 City Council District's Economic Report, the 10th Annual. Our team this morning, I am joined by the 2019 Board Chair for the LA Chamber, Jerry Newman, also a partner with DLA Piper, and our Board Member and Founder of Beacon Economics, Dr. Chris Thornburg, who will lead the discussion in just a few minutes. It is my pleasure to be in front of you once again, as I start my second year as President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. The Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce is a regional chamber representing not only LA County, but the surrounding four counties here in Southern California, representing 1,500 members across various industries that represent about 500,000 employees here within our membership ranks. This morning, we are joined by several of our members that represent various sectors, not just business, but our community groups, our various stakeholder groups. Our organization, one point that I have found incredibly interesting about the Chamber is we always talk about how our economy is fueled by small businesses. You should know that within our membership, that about 67% of our members are small businesses. And small businesses to us that are defined as companies that have 100 employees or less. So we definitely represent the region here. Over the last year, I've had the pleasure to visit with many of you, and I have seen many of you at the various programs at the Chamber. I've enjoyed the opportunity to learn of your priorities and the initiatives that you have. For me, my first year at the Chamber has not only been about listening and learning, but it also has been about transformation. Transforming an organization that has stood the test of time and that has served not only our members, but that is here to serve Los Angeles. Transformation means change, and change is great when it's guided by a plan. One of the most significant things that we did this past year was to adopt a new strategic plan for the Los Angeles Chamber. With a goal of reflecting an ever-changing marketplace and a public policy landscape, we undertook a thorough review of our role in the region, our responsibility, and our work. We looked at our history and reimagined a future that was bright. Our strategic plan will be rolled out in the coming weeks, but to give you a highlight of some of our three pillars that we identified, I will share with you that the first and most important thing for us was to be that advocate, to be that bold voice for business. Recognizing that business is a force for good. Businesses are innovators and job creators, and so keeping a business-friendly environment is key. Recognizing that business can thrive with investment in infrastructure, investment in innovation, as was highlighted this morning through e-commerce, and investments in our workforce. Those pillars are important to the Chamber as we move forward with an advocacy agenda. Our global engagement is another pillar that is very important to us. There is no denying that the global economy in Los Angeles is alive and well, and so ensuring that global trade and foreign investment can happen with ease, and that small businesses have the capacity to participate in that global economy is an important pillar at the Chamber. Taking advantage of our proximity to global markets is a unique attribute for this region and one that we will continue to pursue. Our third pillar that we talked about was our community, and we identified that as community collaboration for economic growth and mobility. Convening business, government, academia, and philanthropy is essential in solving some of the region's most pressing issues. We have made this central to our agenda when it comes to economic growth and mobility. Our mission has evolved to design and advance opportunities and solutions for a thriving regional economy that is inclusive and globally competitive. And our vision, our vision is quite simple, a thriving region for all. This speaks how we aim to eliminate barriers and maximize opportunities for economic prosperity for all. The Chamber is looking to the future. As we evolve, it's an eye towards impact and positive outcomes. And working with each of you will be of great importance, as together we can build the Chamber that can serve this region and serve the city of Los Angeles. Thank you for allowing me those opening remarks. I want to pass it over to our Board Chair, Jerry Newman, who has a few comments.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Madam President, and members of this esteemed body. I am the Chair of the LA Chamber of Commerce, and as such, I would like to welcome our members here and take a moment for them to be recognized. If they would stand, please, I would like all of our members who are here to be recognized. Thank you. As Maria pointed out, we have started along the path of a new strategic plan. That strategic plan is led by a simple, single vision, a thriving region for all. That thriving region for all is something that is so important to us, partly because it sets forth an idea that we have stopped as a Chamber, looking inward, looking only towards business, but turning our attention outward. Turning our attention towards communities that we serve, businesses that we serve, and way in which that we can use the local and regional economy to enhance the lives of everybody that lives within our communities. That position, to look outward, to engage, means that we are going to have to rely on certain values. The values that we are articulating now as a Chamber are that we are going that we are articulating now as a Chamber are that we are going to be bold, we want to be transformative, we have to be inclusive, and we are always responsible, responsible not only in the way that we conduct ourselves, but responsible for the people in which we serve and the businesses that we work with. We are looking to do a number of things in our strategic plan, and we've already started down that path, partly aligning the business voice. What you have seen over the past year is a commitment by the Chamber to engage other business organizations, whether they be ethnic chambers, regional chambers, local chambers, affinity chambers, or affinity business organizations, all who may have a variety of different agenda, but all which want a thriving economy within the area that they serve and to promote the businesses that they serve. We have gone out to engage them. We have brought them into discussions. We have worked on a coalescent voice where business can be a thriving force for good, as Maria had mentioned. We have also outreach, recognizing that this area, while we don't always have the headquarters of a company, we are always their top market, and as such, we are an important market to them, and we set the trends for the rest of the country and oftentimes the rest of the world. And we have demanded upon them to reengage in Los Angeles. The Chamber has gone out across the country this year to meet with CEOs in the places where they live, to ensure that they understand the place that L.A. holds for their companies, and demand upon them the responsibility to come back and engage in Los Angeles, engage in our policies, and engage in our communities. Amazingly, or maybe not so much, we have met with nothing but a huge applause, and thank you very much for coming to us, and thank you for letting us know that Los Angeles' arms are open when it comes to business and a willingness to reengage with us. And the word has gotten out. We are now no longer making calls to those CEOs, we are having CEOs call us and saying, "We want to be part of that train. We want to be part of that mission going forward," and that has been transformative. It has been bold, and it is now being very inclusive, and it underscores the responsibility that we have to this community. This isn't going to get done without certain, you know, bumps in the road, but most importantly, our work doesn't get done without strategic partners. And quite frankly, this city, your body, is our most strategic partner that we have. The engagement that we've been able to have with all of you, with the way we help define your communities, the way we help engage with you and your businesses, the way we help represent the local businesses that you wish and that you foster, that serves as a point of pride for the Chamber. And we are committed to this city, we are committed to this region, and we are committed to you as a strategic partner to be the best partner you can have as you look to foster a better economy and better lives for all of those within your communities. Thank you very much for having us here today. Thank you very much for the engagement that you give, and thank you very much for the time that you're going to spend in making our futures better. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Maria.
Great. Thank you, Jerry, for those comments. I think you all should have a packet that has this document in here, which has our agenda, and Jerry and I will just take you through real quickly through our five points are here before we pass it over to Chris for the presentation. But basically, what we've identified here are our agenda priorities when it comes to City Hall. And our first item on here is fostering policies for business growth. I had my comments prepared here, but there is no better presentation than the one that Councilman Bloomingfield just had right before this. E-commerce and the way the gentleman spoke about being able to grow a business and to thrive within the city, you know, that's what we want to be able to support. Innovation and entrepreneurship and an economy, an environment that can foster the growth versus stifling it in any manner. So, when you look at what we, what our agenda is with regard to fostering those policies, many times there are issues that have come up where you have called on us at the Chamber, and you've asked for our input, and you've asked us to be at that table, and I want to thank you for that, because it's important for us to be at the table and to at least be part of that conversation, whether we are going to agree or not, but being included in that is so important. So, I want to encourage you to continue to call on us for that. Our next item, Jerry?
So, our next item that we want to discuss and that you'll hear about is the Chamber's effort to work with you in closing the affordability gap. Affordability represented by both how people afford their lives, but also the houses which they live in. We have met with stakeholders across the region, both from policymakers to business members, and a common theme has been that an impact on our economy is that affordability gap. The Chamber is committed to making a difference within that affordability gap and finding methods and methodologies that can be worked on to make a difference in ensuring that we have a more affordable and inclusive housing opportunity for everybody. The business community is also actively engaged in community plan updates, as well as transportation neighborhood plans accompanying the build-out of our public transportation system. These plans are key to the vitalization of our local businesses and our local economies, and increasing the supply of affordable workforce and market-rate housing near transit is an imperative that we truly believe in. We're also seeing homelessness on the rise. Each of you know that. The Chamber has been involved for 12 years now, and the fight against homelessness was one of the first early adopters with the United Way on trying to affect policies which will turn the tide and stem and reach out to our most vulnerable neighbors and help find them homes. In that, we are staunch champions of permanent supportive housing and the fast track to creation of bridge housing. We applaud the work that you all do, and it far, it often goes far too not seen enough, the changes and the efforts we're making in the path that we're on to actually helping solve the problem. It is an important voice to recognize that all of us are working together to solve that issue, and that in fact, against common words out there, we are making a difference, and things are changing, and we are on a path to make a difference, and we are your partners in doing that. We want to continue working with you on that, and we want to continue to work with you on bridge housing and making sure that we have outreach to our vulnerable neighbors and make sure that they each have the opportunity to have fair housing at their disposal. Maria?
Thank you, Jerry. With regard to our third agenda, supporting trade, trade, travel, and tourism. As a global city, it is vital to keep our economic drivers competitive. Our air and seaports and our convention center. Los Angeles International Airport has made major strides over the last few years in awarding contracts for the automated people mover and conrak, key components of elevating the passenger experience. The Port of Los Angeles has partnered with GE to implement game-changing efficiencies in the supply chain operations. The Los Angeles Convention Center, managed by AEG, became the first convention center in the country to permanently install a 5G wireless network. These are examples of public-private partnerships intended to ensure the facilities that serve as the foundation of our local economy are primed and competitive for decades to come. We're grateful for your investment and your support of these type of investments that truly make a difference in an economy that is moving forward.
We're also working towards to collaborate on water and energy initiatives for a sustainable city. One of the winning messages from the 2028 Olympic bid was that Los Angeles was committed to being the most sustainable, to having the most sustainable games ever, and aspiring towards being one of the most, if not the most, sustainable city in the world. We envision a decade from now, we will be standing at the precipice of being that city, where we will be the most sustainable, most ecologically friendly city that this planet has. We do that by modernizing our energy delivery system, deploying cleaner fuels and vehicle technology, and securing a reliable baseline of water supply. Reliability and affordability are of paramount importance to any sustainability measure. We must focus on the deployment of proven technologies and balance economic feasibility and environmental stewardship as we embark on these ambitious programs. As part of that, the Chamber has reached out, and has been reached out too, and we are going to support and be part of a partnership to bring the U.S. Chamber on a global water initiative that's coming to the city, and will be holding the Global Water Summit in 2020. And we ask that you will all be part of that as well. Maria?
Great. And lastly, but so important to our agenda, is our, increasing our partnerships to ensure a quality public education system from cradle to career. The success of our city is dependent upon the success of our schools and ensuring our workforce is adequately prepared for the jobs of tomorrow. We are engaging employers on a variety of topics to lead to robust talent pipelines, from supporting initiatives on early childhood education to developing viable solutions to expand paid family leave. Aligning workforce strategies with our high-growth industry sectors is of utmost importance. The Chamber continues to champion many of our educational initiatives, both at the K-12 level, higher ed systems, and into the talent pipeline roles that exist here throughout the city. One of the most important efforts that we're involved with right now is representation on the Governor's Future of Work Commission, and that's a very important effort that we look forward to continuing to engage this body in terms of the work that can be done and the activities that are done here in Los Angeles that can be leveraged and used as best practices across the state. So, I look forward to sharing more with you with regard to the plans that we have in our agenda as we move forward. In closing, thank you for giving us that opportunity to share these economic priorities for the City of Los Angeles. We appreciate the partnership you have had with the Chamber in the past. We have welcomed, you have all welcomed me, and I look forward to deepening that relationship and those ties that we have. Thank you very much. It is now my pleasure to welcome Dr. Chris Thornburg, founder and president of Beacon Economics. We know the value of data and how important it is in order to gain an understanding of local trends and opportunities. So, I know you will enjoy his presentation. Please welcome Dr. Thornburg.
Thank you very much. Good morning, councilmembers. It is very nice to be back with you. How many years has this been? Ten years we've been doing this, which, of course, is always bad news to me, because this is around my birthday, so every time another one of these presentations come around, it means I'm one year older. Soon as I get my presentation up, I will go ahead and get going.
This is your last and final warning.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. So, obviously, we're here to talk about this year's report, the 10th report we've done, on really detailing the trends within the City of L.A., and of course, on a city council by city council district. As I have discussed with you in the past, for us, this is not only a product we enjoy creating for you and for the L.A. Chamber, but of course, it also represents in so many ways, really, the pinnacle of economic data gathering. No other city out there does this kind of in-depth analysis of the individual council districts the way we are doing for you right now. And it's always exciting to have this conversation with you. There is obviously way too many statistics in this book to talk about today, so as always, what I've done is I've really distilled this down to a short presentation. I'm going to start out by talking a little bit about the future, that is to say, what's happening in our broader economy and what's happening right here in the City of L.A., to give you some sense of what's going to be happening over the next year. I will then get into what's happened over the last year, where we start detailing the results of our economic analysis of the various council districts, and then I'm going to end up by talking a little bit about housing and what's happening on that particular front. The big picture is this. There's a lot of good news. First and foremost, no, the economy is not about to dip into a recession despite all the rumors you may have heard to the contrary. The impact of the trade war is far less than is being reported, and that includes right here in L.A. and the ports themselves. L.A. City itself continues to outpace the county and is growing very strongly at this particular point in time. Incomes in the city are also up very nicely, and housing cost burdens are actually falling in the City of L.A. because of that strong income growth. Very good news on this particular front. The bad news is this. The financial turmoil we've seen over the last six, seven months has slowed investment within the city substantially in 2019. When we start talking about a lot of the permit numbers, we're talking about the fiscal year. We ended '18 very strong, but 2019 has been very weak, and we're going to see the ramifications of that, I believe, in next year's report. Political turmoil, of course, will maintain uncertainty at the national level. Labor supply constraints in the state, here in the county, and of course, right here in the city are impacting job growth. There's no doubt that things are slowing down, not because the economy is weak, but because businesses are not able to fill positions. Some districts' economies are being hurt by the lack of available labor, more so than other districts. And of course, last but not least, because of the slowdown of new permitting within the city and the county, you can expect that the housing supply problems that we're dealing with are going to be intensifying over the course of the next year or so. So, starting out the big picture, obviously, there's been a lot of negative news over the course of the last six, seven months. All sorts of folks are talking about various recession signals. Folks are talking about the potential impact of the trade war, particularly with China, and how that may influence our economy. And of course, even some of the folks over at that institution on the west side of town are claiming that next year there is a high likelihood of a recession. While all this negative news has been happening, of course, at the same time, this has turned into the longest expansion in U.S. economic history. Indeed, for all the crazy negative rhetoric at the surface, when you scratch away underneath, you look at the fundamentals of the U.S. economy, and things are really quite good. It's worth taking a step back and talking a little bit about what recessions are. We have to remember that growth is the default mode of any economy. Recession is the anomalies, and they're anomalies driven by some sort of large negative shock to the system. The large negative shock is what makes you understand there's going to be a recession. Predicting that shock is how you predict the next downturn. Of course, back when I left UCLA in 2006, I called the Great Recession. The reason I did that is because I saw massive imbalances in our economy at that particular point in time. Those imbalances unfortunately led to exactly my fears. They push us into an overall economic downturn. But today, if you look at the numbers, you don't see any of these major imbalances. Indeed, for all the rhetoric, the U.S. economy has been growing at an almost annoyingly boring pace over the course of the last three years, 2.8% in 2017, 2.5% in 2018, and 2.55% this particular year, pushed by a broad variety of factors, particularly consumer spending. Consumers are one of the reasons why I'm so optimistic about our economy. If you look at the consumer spending over the course of the last five or six years, they've been a nice steady 2.5% to 3% in real terms on a year-on-year basis. Savings rates have been slowly drifting up to about 8%. And of course, because of a lack of new debt accumulation and low interest rates, the financial burden of financial obligations on households in the U.S. is at a record-low level. In many ways, the strength of the American consumer is exactly what allows us to push through all sorts of external economic difficulties. This means almost assuredly, the stressors on our economy today are not going to turn into a major downturn. Another sign, of course, the fact that the U.S. economy is doing just fine, has to do with the housing market, which everybody thought was going to melt down, actually has started to pick up over the course of the last few months. Overall, home sales are up, new home sales are up in the U.S., and prices, which had slowed down sharply, have actually started to firm up, and you can expect price growth to continue. In L.A., in last year, we saw price growth of about 7.4%. That slowed nicely to 1.6% over the course of '18 and '19. It's going to pick up, back up again. Why folks thought the housing market was going to slow down sharply is a little bit confusing to us at Beacon Economics. Vacancy rates in the U.S. housing market today at an all-time low level, compared at, of course, to 2005, when they were very, very high because of the excess amount of production. And back then, of course, lending standards had completely collapsed, and there were dangerous signs of excessive risk-taking within the mortgage markets. Over the last decade, the mortgage markets, because of Dodd-Frank, have been about as clean as they have ever been. So, this is a market that is based on good mortgages and a lack of building, if anything. That means, of course, the housing market was never going to implode, despite, again, some of the negative opinions to the contrary. What caused the market to slow down, of course, was interest rates to go up again. The good news, thinking towards the next year, is interest rates are yet again back down. Mortgage rates are back to 3.5%, of course, following the 10-year bond down. Now, that has created another problem, which is the inverted yield curve, which is another one of those negative indicators. one of those negative indicators that a lot of economists out there are talking about. I think you could put the yield curve to one side. A yield curve, while it's strongly correlated with recessions, does not, do not cause recessions. An inverted yield curve without other major real-world imbalances simply doesn't create the conditions for a recession. It does, however, put a lot of pressure on the Fed to bring down short-run rates, which is exactly what they're trying to do right now, to unwind the yield curve and take some of the pressure off the banking system. What's driving strong housing markets and strong consumer spending are strong labor markets. We've been adding a little over 2 million jobs a year consistently for the last five or six years. Right now, in the U.S. economy, the unemployment rate remains at a very low 3.7%, where the job openings rate is running about 4.6%. There are more businesses looking for people to work for them than there are people looking for work in the U.S. economy right now. That, of course, is very good for workers, but a bit of a problem for American businesses, which are really struggling to fill positions. One of the results of this, of course, is wage growth is very, very strong. Data from the Atlanta Fed, the Atlanta Fed Wage Tracker, which corrects a lot of the flaws in the monthly number we get from the BLS, shows that average wage growth over the last five years has been running about 3.8% in real terms, median wage growth running about 2%. And across the nation, the strongest wage growth we've been seeing is here on the west coast, particularly here in California, which has seen some of the biggest increases in wage growth in the nation. The issue with workers is, again, not the fact that they aren't getting ahead, they are getting ahead, but rather the lack of available workforce. Over the last five or six years, workforce growth in the United States has averaged less than 1% on an annual basis, driven, of course, by the, by that sort of end, if you will, the demographic bulge called the boomers. The boomers are now retiring, and because the millennial population is so small, every time a boomer retires, we only get one millennial coming into the workforce. These constraints are palpable, and, of course, it's going to get worse. When you think over the next decade and the changes in demographics, we're predicting somewhere on the order of 22 million new Americans over the course of the last decade, of which 18 million are going to be 65-plus. This is a rapidly aging economy, and because of that, we simply don't have the workforce necessary to continue to support, again, filling all those new jobs. Now, one of the big questions is where is, where is unemployment rates the lowest in the United States? The interesting answer here, it's not, of course, on the coast. It actually is in the Midwest. Now, this isn't necessarily because the Midwest economies are the strongest. It's rather, of course, of a function of where people are moving. When you live in a labor-constrained world, where people move to are the places that can grow. So, for example, people are moving away from Iowa and Wisconsin, they're moving to places like Nevada and Arizona. That's one of the reasons why Arizona and Nevada have some of the fastest-growing labor markets in the nation. California stands out. We are a nation where people are moving away, but we have an incredibly strong economy. That gets, of course, to the unique problems California faces in terms of housing, particularly here in the City of L.A. Now, it's worth talking a little bit about industrial production, because that's the current fear. As you know, the markets have been dropping crazy over the last couple of days, in large part because of the slowdown in industrial production. This, however, is not a strong indicator of overall economic growth. We saw very negative numbers back in 2016 as a result of the global commodity bust. That, however, did not turn in any kind of major downturn. This is not a sign of any kind of slowdown in the economy. It's also not a slowdown of the trade war that everybody keeps talking about. Despite all the rhetoric about the negativity of the trade war in the U.S. economy, the reality is, is real exports and real imports have not changed over the course of the last year. They haven't grown, but nor have they shrunk at all. And while we're importing and exporting less with China, that trade has simply shifted to other parts of the world. That means, overall, this trade situation is nowhere near as acute as people would tend to suggest. You are feeling a little bit more out here in the west coast. If you take a look at L.A. ports, this is Long Beach in L.A., of course, you will see that over, in 2019, imports and exports are down from the previous year, but, of course, the previous year was a very strong year overall. It's still going to be a decent year, even if there's a bit of a slowdown overall. And by the way, this isn't just China. There's actually just a bit of a slowdown for the rest of the world buying California-based products. So, again, it's not just a China situation. For me, in fact, we had an event not too long ago at the Chamber where we talked a little bit about trade, and at that point in time, we all had decided that really the biggest issue on the trade front is not China at all, but, of course, the fact that the new NAFTA agreement has yet to, of course, get passed. Of course, Mexico and Canada are actually far more important trading partners for the United States, and having this stalled in Congress right now is not good. This is not an agreement we want to let it go away. That would have a far more negative impact on the California economy. So where is California right now in terms of growth? Well, you know, last year, we talked about this, and I pointed out that California was the fifth-growing, fastest-growing state in the nation two years ago, excuse me. Right now, we're down to ninth, and, of course, over the last year, job growth in the state has slowed to 1.9%, just a little above the national average. This, again, is driven by a lack of workers. The unemployment rate in the State of California, 4%, is the lowest it's ever been. We're simply having trouble filling positions, and this is a function of the lack of housing. We've discussed this in the past, but the State of California needs 200,000 to 250,000 permits per year. We're not even running half that, and that, of course, ignores the fact that we're, it's also the backlog of available units, somewhere on the order of 2 million overall. And because of the worries about the U.S. economy, housing permits in the state have slowed over the course of the last year. Rather than picking up the pace and starting to fill in the gap, you actually see California falling further behind, and it's worth noting, the greatest slowdown in new permits in absolute terms is right here in the County of Los Angeles. Now, again, this isn't a function of the L.A. economy being weak. L.A.'s economy is at a record-high level in terms of economic activity. You know, I remember just a few years ago when we saw the L.A. 2020 report, and we heard all the negativity about how bad things were, but, of course, those underlying worries were not really realistic. In fact, Los Angeles has a new momentum in it like we've never seen before. The economy's turned a corner, and we have record numbers of both payroll jobs in the county as well as employed residents. And indeed, Los Angeles has added 300,000 people to its labor force over the last five years. That's the fourth-fastest in the nation in absolute terms. Now, getting really close to home, talking about the city versus the county, getting into some of the statistics, again, L.A., a couple of years ago, a bit of a slowdown, but L.A. City itself has actually, over the course of the last two years, really picked up speed, and you'll see that the, that the city is growing substantially faster than the county overall. That's true both in terms of job growth as well as payroll, payroll jobs as well, in terms of overall job growth. The numbers are higher and growing a little bit faster here. Getting a little bit into the county versus city comparisons, on the right-hand side, you get a little bit of a breakdown of what we saw in some of the important sectors. For example, information jobs, it's an extremely volatile sector driven both by technology as well as the movie industry. We saw a big slowdown in the county. Here in the city, we remained flat. So while the news wasn't great for information, it was, on average, better than the county overall. On the other side of it, transport and logistics absolutely exploded in the City of L.A., driven largely by Mike Bonin's district, as we'll come to in just a second. But overall, about 2.2% growth from, through the third quarter of 2018, the most recent data we have. Strong growth in healthcare, leisure and hospitality kept up, transport, again, was through the roof, as was education jobs. We did see some weakness in manufacturing, that was down, and wholesale trade was relatively weak as well. Now, we're going to get a little bit into the individual districts in just a second, but here's kind of a breakdown of where the different, where the different regions are on a job, on a job growth basis. Every single district, with the exception, unfortunately, of one, saw positive job growth in this particular year. Only District Nine saw a little bit of slowing in job growth, but any other district had positive numbers. There was a range of outcomes. District 11 had the biggest number of 5.4%. You also saw very strong numbers in District Five and, of course, District 13. On the other hand, some districts were a little bit weaker. Also, wages were up across the board. Businesses are paying their folks more, very strong numbers on that particular front. Grocery receipts also did fairly well for the city overall, but, again, a little bit of a mixed, a mixed bag in terms of who saw big increases and who saw some slowing. Districts 12, 11, 7, and 5, 15, saw the biggest increases in grocery receipts. District Four was basically flat, and Six, Two, and One actually saw a little bit of a decrease. Now, again, you do see these kinds of ebbs and flows and things, but it gives you some indication of where we're seeing the biggest growth in business revenues, at least as determined by grocery receipts. On the non-residential real estate side, again, we see relatively good numbers for office and retail. Rents continue to go up, and vacancy rates continue to fall, particularly for retail, which, again, is relatively good news. You see, obviously, retail establishments doing pretty good in the City of L.A. at this particular point in time. But with, while the numbers are relatively good at the surface, as already noted, we've seen a big slowdown in permits through the first part of 2019. That's across the county, but particularly here in the City of L.A. In the first six months of the year, we've seen an almost 80% drop in commercial permits relative to the first six months of last year. Now, again, we could still have a better second half of the year that might help us catch up a bit. This, of course, is being driven in part by some of the, what I would call, unreasonable fears about the health of the overall economy, but also because Los Angeles City itself saw a lot of Chinese capital being removed in the context of the overall trade war, and that slowed things down as well. Now, getting a little bit into some of the details of the individual districts, as noted here, I have a couple of highlights for each district. There's a lot more information in the book for you to peruse. In District One, again, a very good year, particularly for grocery receipts. The healthcare sector in particular saw a 40% increase in grocery receipts, very, very good numbers there. Employment in industries, in construction, information, leisure, and hospitality also saw a very good growth, so key sectors in that particular region. Paul Krikorian's district did very well, but from a, from a residential perspective, that, of course, saw a very big bump, one of the biggest bumps. This is fiscal year numbers, by the way. Saw a very big bump through the first half of this particular, sorry, the last fiscal year. And here, industries such as admin support, wholesale trade, leisure and hospitality saw very strong wage growth. Getting into District Three, another very good year for non-residential. Again, a lot of this is the second half of last year, the first half of this fiscal year, if this case may be. Very, very strong numbers, about $145 million, and construction industry saw, construction industry saw very, very strong employment growth in that particular region. David Ru's district, District Four, had very good numbers in terms of taxable sales. Last year's numbers were way down. There may be a data glitch, but whatever it was, it was fixed. This year's growth, we saw very, very strong numbers. You see overall economic retail spending activity here doing very well. And interestingly, the non-internet broadcasting sector, that, of course, has to do with movie and TV production, grew impressive 7%. So, again, you can see that information, that the entertainment industry is doing very, very well in District Four. Now, District Five, Paul Kreutz's district, this is, of course, is one of the smaller job districts, largely residential, very high in residential, as the case may be, but interestingly enough, you saw the most new, new business formations in this particular district anywhere in the city. So very good numbers here, you're seeing better growth here, and, of course, overall employment growth also exceeded state, city average. So it's interesting how, while it's a relatively small district from a job basis, you saw very, very strong numbers overall. Getting up into the north part of the city in District Six, Ms. Martinez's district, very good numbers here. Healthcare, of course, grew by almost 7%. That has a lot to do, of course, with a lot of new investment in the hospital up in that particular region, a region that has been typically underserved by the healthcare sector, very good news there. Also, non-residential permits were up very, very strongly, and wage growth in this, in this district was also very, very strong. So very good news there. Getting into District Seven, residential permitting here had a very strong fiscal year through 2019, largely driven by multifamily permits. This is very, very good, and, again, all the apartments we can build is important. Six employment sectors saw average wage increases as well, over more than 6%. So rapidly rising wage growth in this region, again, good news for the local economy, as the case may be. District Eight, now District Eight is one of, of course, one of the smaller, smaller, less-developed parts of the city economy. Very good news on this particular front. Year-over-year job growth in District Eight was 5.7%. So, again, while it has a relatively low wage base, the job growth here was very, very strong, and there was also good non-residential investment through the course of the last fiscal year. Good news for this particular region. District Nine, not such good news. Overall, there was a little bit of a contraction in job growth. We think some of the labor supply issues have had an excessive issue on this particular district, but on the upside, residential permit valuations were up very, very strongly. You see investment in the existing housing stock, a new investment in new housing here. This is a region that has not seen a lot of new development, so this is good news for the overall growth in the region. And wages were also up. Getting into District Ten, overall, information wages were up, but we did see a big decline in information jobs in District Ten. I think you're seeing, again, some of the volatility hitting this particular district. We had, however, District Ten did have a relatively strong non-residential permit year through the fiscal year, up about $120 million, largely driven by commercial building. District Eleven, Mike Bonin's district, of course, over by the airport, here yet again is a very, very strong non-residential permit, $1.6 billion, the most among any of the permits, and, of course, very, very strong job growth, largely driven by logistics. It's not, it's not, it's not Silicon Beach. It's really the airport and everything that's happening around the airport. And, again, gets to just how important the redevelopment of the LAX area has been to the overall strength of the L.A. City economy. So very, very good news here. John Lee's district, District Twelve, very good numbers in terms of grocery receipts, 11.5%, the most among any of the city council districts. And what's interesting is a lot of job growth, job growth largely driven by the large employers. So, you know, a lot of times, we think of L.A., of course, as being driven by small employers, but this district, of course, you do have a lot of large employers, and they're doing quite well. They're adding people. Good news for this particular district. District 13, good news here. Information jobs growing by 11%, substantially faster, very good news on that particular front. Average wages up strongly, but the bit of bad news in terms of District 13 was that residential permits actually declined quite sharply relative to the previous year. Again, housing, housing, housing. Anytime I see a negative number in housing, I get a little bit worried. I'd like to see a little more on this front. District Fourteen, Jose Wezar, here, it's the exact opposite of District Twelve. It's small businesses that are pushing the economy forward here. 3.6% expansion in the number of firms with less than 15 employees, and, of course, permit issuance for mixed-use alterations was largely responsible for a big leap in overall residential permits. Logistics growth here was relatively slow compared to the airport. And then, of course, as last but not least, Joe's district down there in District 15, news here was probably a little less good than some of the other places. Overall job growth was down to about 1.4%. Not a surprise, given the fact that the ports have seen a little bit of decline in overall economic activity. However, grocery receipts were up strongly, suggesting other parts of the local economy doing very well. Single-family permits were down a bit, which is a bit of a disappointment, but I actually have probably the best bit of news for District 15 I can give, which is, Joe, I see your visit the L.A. waterfront. Well, one of my younger employees, just in his early twenties, actually went to the waterfront for the first time on Saturday, had the time of his life. So apparently, you're being discovered, and I think that's very good news. So, wrapping it all up, I do want to get a little bit into the income front. If you look at household incomes, they've been growing very, very well in the City of L.A., getting close to $65,000. Still a little bit below the county overall, but good numbers, and, of course, wages also growing very, very nicely across the board. It's interesting to note that over the last three years, the biggest wage increases we've seen are for people without a high school degree. You can really see the labor shortage here lifting all boats, and perhaps a little of the minimum wage as well. I know, I know. I know, I know. I knew you were going to go there. So, but if you look across the districts, this is great news here. This, of course, is median household incomes, and it's the 2017 data. We just got 2018. We'll process that for next year, of course, but, again, you can see every single district is seeing increases in median household income. Very good news here. Unfortunately, we're also seeing increases in housing costs. Now, housing price and housing price growth has slowed over the course of the last year or so. There's no doubt about that. But, again, you can suggest, you can all expect that this is going to pick up again in the second half of the year, driven by a lack of supply in those low interest rates. On the rental side of the front, cost of rents continue to rise as well, and vacancy rates, with the exception of downtown, still remain very, very tight. Downtown has seen a huge amount of new housing being put into place, which is great news, but we really need to see more of that in other parts of the city, as the case may be, and candidly, other parts of the county overall. As already noted, unfortunately, 2019, year-to-date, single-family permits are down, and multifamily permits are down even more. Now, that's true mostly in the City of L.A. The City of L.A. has been, really, carried most of the burden on the multifamily front. You've seen a slowdown here, a little bit of a pickup in the rest of the county, but not enough to offset the slowdown here in the city. This is obviously not good news for a region that is still very, very housing-constrained. And you can go on a district-by-district here, and you can see the number of new housing units. Overall, some places have slowed down just a bit. Let me go ahead and get a little specific into the numbers here. You can see District Nine, 11, 12, and Seven are all up. However, other districts such as 13, 4, 10, 3, 1, and 15 are down, and the other districts are relatively flat. Again, we would like to see all these numbers being positive. It's so important for the continued expansion and health of this particular economy. Another way of looking at this is housing vacancy rates. And again, it's a good sense of telling you where we really need the new supply by looking at these vacancy rates. 6, 12, 7, 2, and 3 have some of the lowest vacancy rates in the cities. This is where we really need to see the greatest expansion in new permits. Unfortunately, we're mainly seeing them other areas, which tend to be downtown, not in these other more outlying districts. So we need a broad-based expansion of overall housing. While the supply is of concern, as already noted, the strong incomes have taken away, at least from my perspective, some of the affordability issues. Over the last five or six years, right through 2018, you can see that the median rent is a percent of household income, and the median monthly homeowner cost is a percent of household income. These numbers have actually continued to fall. Now, affordability is still a problem here in LA. There's no doubt it is one of the most expensive places in the county, most expensive places in the country to live. But the solution to that, of course, is simply supply. Build it, make it available to be built, and we're going to see overall prices come down. It's all about getting those permit numbers up. So wrapping it up, there's a lot of information there, but overall, things are fine. GDP growth is going to continue at a 2.5% pace, for our perspective, right through the next year, and almost assured that the year after as well. Labor markets will be tight, wages are continuing to rise, interest rates are low, inflation's constrained. Really, the economy is just fine. Yes, there's some stressors out there, but overall, the stressors are not enough for us to downgrade our forecast. We continue to see the city, we continue to see the county, we continue to see the state and the nation continue to move ahead. For us, the single largest barrier is simply housing, no more, no less. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam President, I do have a number of members on the queue. Would you like to conclude? Or would you like me to go to the members?
Yes, please.
Go on to Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you all very much. This is always really helpful to us, I think, every year. And I agree, Chris. It has seemed like a long time that we've been doing this, but it's been through good times and through bad times. And I think one of the big takeaways I have from your report this year is really confirming what I think all of us viscerally understood, which was that the overall economy in Los Angeles is exceptionally strong right now. Doesn't affect everyone. It's not benefiting everyone, to be sure.
Absolutely.
But the macroeconomic sort of factors in Los Angeles are all exceedingly positive. And sort of this narrative of, you know, Texas eating our lunch and taking business away from California is all nonsense. It's utter rubbish. And to your point, Jerry, when you were talking about headquarters maybe not being in downtown Los Angeles, maybe that's true. Headquarters have generally been in Delaware. That doesn't mean Delaware is a better place to do business than California. California continues to have the benefit of, you know, this exceptional synergy with our higher education institutions. The busiest port complex on the west coast of North and South America, the busiest destination airport in the world. We have, the big problem that we have is a labor shortage, so that we're constraining growth because so many people are working. So in every respect, I think this is really, really positive news. And I'd like to make special note, as I do every year, of the comparison between the city and the county. Because the county workforce, of course, the county business community has all of those same advantages as Los Angeles. Same port, same airport, same workforce generally, and so on. And yet, we continue to outpace the county, as we do most years, in annual employment growth, in importantly, I think, non-residential permit value. So businesses are investing in the city more than they are investing in the county as a whole. And so that tells me a lot. It tells me a lot about sort of the things that we have control over here in this chamber, our regulatory environment, our tax environment, and so on within this city. To the extent that, you know, some businesses consider those to be challenges, they're apparently not such great challenges that it causes businesses to relocate from Los Angeles to Burbank, or Los Angeles to Santa Clarita, or Los Angeles to Acton, or wherever. So that's, I think, all really, really good, strong news. I'd like to ask a couple of questions, and then just have you expound upon them if you can. First of all, we are in a competition with the rest of the country. We're doing very well in that competition. But what are some of the other largest metropolitan areas in Los Angeles doing, in the United States, doing to attract new business, to stimulate business growth, that we can learn from? In other words, how can we compete better with some of the marketplaces that we are competing? That would be one question. And then second, and you touched upon this towards the end, Chris, it's great that we have rising wages. It's great that we have a reduction in the affordability gap. It's great that we have a labor shortage. It's great for workers, not so great for businesses, but it's great for workers. And yet, we still know that the people at the bottom rung of the economic ladder in Los Angeles are suffering greatly. And to me, I'm having trouble kind of correlating those concepts. And so I'd like you to talk to us a little bit about what kind of job market potential there is for those who are at the very lowest skill levels, and what we should be doing to help address the great challenge that we have in that area as well.
Sure. Yeah. So in terms of, when I think about sort of business attraction, we have to think about, you know, no matter what you want to do for business attraction right now, it's going to be hard for businesses to relocate here if they can't actually hire workforce. So you're facing at some level the challenge of a lack of housing on that front. So probably the best thing you could do to expand the economy is to expand the housing supply. That's pretty obvious. But putting that to one side, the other thing is, at least my personal bias here is that what I hear from businesses is it's really not as much about, you know, what are the rules or what are the taxes, but rather transparency. Tell me the rules. Be clear about them. Don't make me fight in court for six or seven years against, you know, nameless accusations that I couldn't possibly have figured out ahead of time. Just tell us what the rules are and stick by them, and then let us make the decision. I think transparency is by far and away the best ointment to simply encourage companies to be here, as the case may be. Now, the second part of your question, I think, is important because there's always a group of people who are falling behind. We have to recognize that. The positivity of my analysis, and a lot of the conversations, say, for example, about growing wages for the least skilled people among us, is to suggest at some level that, not that there is nobody being left behind, but the group of folks who are struggling are smaller now than they were two years ago. They're smaller than they were four years ago, and of course, they're massively smaller than they were 10 years ago. So at some level, a strong economy is lifting a lot of folks out of their troubles, but not everybody. Now, isolating the folks who are having trouble and saying, how do we help these particular folks? Well, I'm going to tell you right now, there's two ways of doing that, of course. There's short-run and the long-run ways. The long-run ways, of course, is about improving the education system, as we already talked about, making sure that these families and their kids have opportunities their parents didn't have in terms of getting skills and getting into college, coming out with a good degree that businesses want. That's a part of the long-run situation. From a short-run situation, you do have people on the outside looking in. They don't have the skills. They don't have the ability to get into this labor market. However, this is exactly the point in time where the labor market needs everybody and anybody. You know, I like to say, you think about the programs that you can use to retrain people, or take people who have been formerly unemployable and make them employable. This is the time to be reaching into the households and giving these people those critical skills to take advantage of this incredibly tight labor market. Eight, nine years ago, these folks wouldn't have been looked at because there was a plentiful supply of experienced, skilled workers to fill those jobs. Those people don't exist now. So all the efforts you do over the years to reach out to these folks and help them retrain, all those efforts right now should be doubled and tripled. Because this is the point in time when you can really give these people a path ahead, a path to the future.
I'd just like to address your comment in terms about what other cities are doing. And I think it's important to put it in the context of maybe not what they're doing, but maybe one of the attributes that they might have that is a challenge here. And that's the affordability factor, especially when it comes to housing. So when we've visited other cities and we've talked to CEOs from major corporations, like we talked about, I think it's okay that they're not headquartered here in Los Angeles, so long as they recognize that this is an important market for them and that they need to be engaged here. So that's been our message, is that even though you might not be living within the boundaries of the city of Los Angeles, this is an important market for you. Your workforce is here, and we should be connected. We should be collaborating on some of those things. So I think when I visit some of those cities, that maybe the leg up that they might have is the affordability factor related to that. On your second question with regard to the lowest skill levels, we should definitely be looking at how we can be better connectors with our educational systems. Just yesterday, I was on the phone with a president of one of the CSUs here within this area, and the resources in training and in preparing our students to go into the labor, the workforce, is very broad here. And yet, we still are not making those connections with, you know, where we're seeing those jobs and the needs of the jobs. I was at a studio yesterday, who again was explaining that they were, you know, short on a variety of different roles within their campus there. So I think there's an opportunity for us to collaborate among the different sectors to connect our folks and help in that area.
Thank you.
To address a little bit of a finer point on what cities are doing. In many of the cities that we've gone to, what we have found is a true coordinated effort between their business community, their Economic Development Council, or whatever they happen to have in their community, and their city to actually go out and seek business. Oftentimes, they're going to trade shows around the world to talk to folks who are either creating things or investing, and bringing those things here. When we go to other cities, we tend to meet with the chambers. What we're finding is the chambers are coming here and meeting with our businesses and not necessarily letting us know. So they are, there is this effort out there to try to extract businesses from Los Angeles, but to also go elsewhere in coordination and get businesses to think of their communities first. On the other question, it's briefly, just a story. As we were sitting in the hallway, I just heard of a program that Dean Leavenworth brought to my attention, where a number of executives in corporations are starting programs where they're reading to second graders. And they're spending each afternoon, taking an hour out to read to second graders. What they found is that as a child transitions from second to third grade, at the third grade level, if they're reading at grade level, they have a 90% chance of graduation. If they're not, they're a 50% of not graduating. And just that difference in that year, which is why at the chamber, we're investing in first five and early education and thinking so much about that.
Okay, thank you. Next member is Mr. Bonin, followed by Mr. Price, Mr. Sadio, and Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you all for the presentation. I always look forward to this every year. It's great information. There were some slides you presented that aren't in here. Could you send those?
Absolutely.
Great. I'd like to read those. And just a technical correction to start. The description of my district left out Delray and Ladera. And I love all of my communities. I'd like to see them included in Palms, as in CD5 and CD10. So with that editing thing over with, and I find an editing thing every year, Chris.
We'll make sure we send the report to you ahead of time next time, sir.
Thank you.
Quick review.
There's a lot in here that, as the representative of the 11th district, I could find to celebrate. There's some great numbers in here. You singled out CD11 a couple of times. But there's a couple of different ways to view this. You know, the median household income in my district is comparatively off the charts and is going up. And, you know, I represent the richest people in the city, followed closely by Mr. Coretts. And no doubt that some of them are getting wealthier. But I also suspect that the median household income in my district is going up because households with a smaller income are being displaced. They can't afford to live there anymore. They're moving to other parts of the city, or they're leaving the city entirely. And I think that's a phenomenon we're seeing around the city. I'm seeing it a lot in my district, where someone will come in and tear down a fourplex and build a McMansion. I am seeing Ellis Act evictions all over the place. And there is not a week that goes by that I am not hearing a heart-wrenching story of someone who is displaced and can no longer live in my district. So, you know, we talk a lot about housing here. I'm curious what anti-gentrification or anti-displacement policies the chamber supports or would encourage us to approve.
I always want to be clear that, you know, there's Kristofer and Beacon Economic Opinions, and while I work and love working with the chamber, we don't necessarily always have the same things on this. So I would just weigh in that for me, the best anti-identification tool we have is supply, 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 supply.
So let me push past that, because I knew you were going to say that, but I'd like to hear some other answers. Because supply is going up in a lot of places, and as that supply comes in, the units replacing them, even under our incentive program, are not the income loads, and people are being displaced. Supply itself, the market by itself does not do it. So I'd like to hear from, I'd like to hear from the chamber what policies the chamber would support.
And I think at this point, you know, I'd love to be able to sit down with you and understand what type of measures you think would be helpful for us to work together on. I'm not, I can't say that we have, you know, here is the displacement policy that will work. I think what I have learned from visiting around the region is that there's different issues related to displacement, depending on what part of the city you're in. But I think it's important for us to sit down and talk to you and try to understand what are some specific actions that we can take. Because I'd be happy to work with you on that, and to work with others around this table here, and to make sure that, you know, that we are close to those issues that you feel are really at the root of what is happening within your district, and I'm sure it's very similar to others as well.
Thanks. I wanted to ask one other question. If I could just ask the other question, so Ms. Martinez is going to slide.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin, for recognizing that we have other members on the queue.
Yes, thank you. So let me ask it, and then if you want to sort of hit both when you answer, Jerry. The city and the chamber have had a very long history of working together on tackling some of the biggest challenges we face. Transportation, homelessness, public safety, the list goes on and on. I think one of the biggest issues that we face, and I think this council is really recognizing it, is the threat of climate change. The threat of climate change to our city and the threat of climate change to our economy. The GDP may look good for the next couple of years locally, but globally, the GDP is, by some estimates, going to take a hit of 15 to 30% over the next several decades. You pointed to my district often as one of the city's economic engines. There are people who live in that economic engine, who run some of the companies that are economic engines, whose homes are threatened daily by wildfire, who can no longer get fire insurance. There are businesses and neighborhoods in that economic engine that are at the threat of flooding. And in that economic engine, due to the impacts of climate change, healthcare costs are going to go up, food prices are going to go up. We're going to see weather impacts on our roads. And the housing crisis will intensify because more people are going to be moving in because we are going to have, and we are seeing it now, climate migration. So I'm curious, is the chamber engaging on the climate crisis? And what approaches that the city is considering is the chamber supportive of?
The chamber has had very, has had several initiatives related to sustainability, that date back even before I ever got here. I think that is definitely an area where we can expand, we can grow. We were very involved with all the wildfire activity that was happening last year, and how we, as a chamber, could be helpful to the efforts that we have here within the city in terms of driving policy around that. We continue to be engaged, not only here locally, but at the statewide and the federal level as well in some of those conversations. So we can definitely bring forward more initiatives related to that. I'm grateful for you bringing it up in terms of a priority area because I think it is something that is on our radar screen. In fact, coming up in the month of November, we're going to be... In fact, coming up in the month of November, we're going to be reviewing, having a conference around infrastructure and sustainability will be a part of that as well, along the topics that you just mentioned.
And we're also... I know it's tough because you have some fossil fuel companies in the chamber, but we have to get off of them, and I'd be curi, I'd love to work with you to move forward on that.
And we're looking at this issue globally. Quite frankly, we met with the city of Nagoya, where we have looked at what best practices are from a sustainability perspective. And we have a better ans, I have an answer for you as well on your first question.
Thank you. I've got to move on to the next member. Mr. Price, followed by Mr. Sadio, Mr. Coretts, and Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, thank you, Chamber, for the presentation. It's always illuminating and inspiring. I certainly want to associate myself with the comments made by my colleagues, Bonin and Krikorian, especially as it relates to how the, those less fortunate are impacted. And while all the boats are rising, there's still a lot of boats that are still sort of stuck in the mud. And so that has to be an important focus. I have a certain concern about the contraction that you say exists in the, in our district with the, with employment. And you identify, I guess, manufacturing as a primary reason for the decline. I'm interested to know what those other two areas are, though, what's first and second in terms of that growth. I'm hopeful, obviously, about the wages, although the educational attainment is still low, at the very bottom. You noted that the increase was there. It was almost at the level of the county increase in terms of wages going up. I think it's 9.2%. So that's important. I was curious, though, about the construction. You note the pullback in commercial activities, commercial alterations, you call them, and the increase in residential. We're certainly pleased with the residential. But we've had some significant construction projects, though, public sector projects, public and private sector projects, the Coliseum, football stadium, Lucas Museum. How does that factor into activities, construction activities, as opposed to a decline?
Sure. You've got to remember that permits are a leading indicator, right? So in other words, the kind of big projects going on right now have to do with the larger permits we saw a couple of years ago. Unfortunately, we haven't seen an addition of new of those permits. And I think your point's well taken. There's been some very large public infrastructure projects, think about the Coliseum, you know, being a county property. However, going back to some of the manufacturing, some of that industrial base in that region, they're not doing so well, and they're not seeing that kind of investment there. For me, though, I'm still very excited about the new housing going in because what I've seen oddly enough is there's almost, there's almost this oddness in our housing market where the developers want to go into regions like, say, Mike Bonin's or Paul Coretts's, and they want to build in those high-end regions because that's where they feel like they can get the big profit margins, and that's where they're willing to fight through all the red tape. Whereas other regions, such as yours, and there's other parts of LA County, I think along the 710 corridor, for example, in which there's incredible density, a real housing supply shortage, way vastly overcrowded housing, I'm sure you're seeing that in your district as well, and yet almost no constructions going into place because they're not willing to fight the red tape to try and get something down down there. Well, what's happening is there's enough demand, enough shortage, that people are starting to look at your district and starting to put housing in there. And that's a strong sign of a new wave of growth moving into the region. And it's going to support, maybe your manufacturing base is going to start, continue to fall off because it's tougher manufacturing and operating in the city. However, some of that new investment moving into the region means there's going to be a lot of new demand for local supply and local businesses, and that's going to help your region over the next couple of years.
True. Well, we're excited about the housing, but the problem is certainly consistent with what Mr. Bonin suggested is that, you know, local folks are getting priced out.
Yes.
So just because there are new projects coming in doesn't mean that the folks who are living in those areas are really benefiting. In fact, gentrification is a real factor that I think we have to try to, we have to try to measure and value because it's real.
Absolutely. Yeah. But I know, I don't, I don't want to take all the stage show, but I just want to go back to that. When you, when you think about economies that don't have a big backlog, you look at a place like Houston or Dallas, which have a lot of new supply coming online, and there's housing for everybody. Again, it's not fair to say the supply doesn't work because we really actually haven't given supply a fair shake yet. We're nowhere near the amount of supply we need to support economic growth. You know, we've done some analysis that if you wanted to have 2% job growth in LA County, we're talking about 90,000 permits a year. Excuse me, 60, that's 90,000 jobs, 60,000 permits, and the overall county is only building 24,000. So if you don't get anywhere close to actual need, yeah, there's going to be a huge bias towards the top end of the market, and lower income people are going to have to be displaced. So the answer is, is to make supply work, we have to have a lot more supply than we do right now. And if we're not willing to add new supply, then we have a whole separate set of conversations we have to have, which, you know, goes to more about protecting people from being displaced, but acknowledging that's going to end up hurting supply ultimately.
Yeah, well, admittedly, it's a catch 22. I mean, obviously, we want to have market rate housing.
Yeah.
In underserved areas as well.
Right.
We just don't want to, that housing to then push everybody else out. There has to be a balance, affordable and...
Well, rezoning, taking some of those commercial areas that are being underutilized and changing those into residential, allowing them to be built there would be one way of avoiding this problem.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Sadio, followed by Mr. Coretts.
Let me get a variation on the same theme. First of all, let me suggest a way to deal with displacement is an effort on behalf of the chamber to support SB5. SB5 is on the governor's desk. SB5 will bring billions of dollars to the city. I was speaking with the governor's office yesterday. You know, there is, there are 10,000 units that are under covenants that will be ending shortly. If those covenants end and we do not have an ability to extend those covenants, 10,000 units will then basically undermine our efforts to build 7,500 units with our 1.2 billion from Triple H. And so let me suggest that that is one effort that both of us can share in, in terms of talking to the governor's office before the deadline comes up. And there's some resistance from the educational community because it uses ERAF dollars. And I would note that this is the type of housing, though, that will be protected and be built, that will create affordability for teachers and for people who work in the educational systems, K through 12, university systems. We need that type of housing. So that's number one in terms of a strategy that we can work together on. Second, I'm interested in your comments again on market rate housing and its relationship to affordability, because we all talk about affordability, but affordability is restricted to certain incomes when it's created. And so talk to us how these two forces, these two types of housing interface with each other and how more supply addresses this concern.
Well, in general, in economics, there's a term called filtering. And the idea of filtering is, is by building sufficient new housing at really any level of demand, you create enough opening at the bottom end, if you will, of the housing market to support needs for everybody. Again, when you look at a place like, say, Houston or Dallas, which has built tons of new housing.
Yes.
But they, what they do is they still have a bias towards building at the higher end of the market, there's no doubt about it. But by constantly adding to the housing stock at the new end of the market, they have created plenty of availability at the lower end. And there's some data I presented here before, which looks at the household income relative to the age of the structure built. And what you see across California, particularly in cities like LA and San Francisco, is that there's been such a lack of new supply that what you're really doing is you're pushing higher income folks into the older part of the housing stock, thus displacing lower income families. There's no doubt that gentrification and displacement is absolutely real. But again, from my perspective, the way to deal with that, making sure we have enough market rate housing coming online. Now, there is conversations about how do we allow market rate housing to come online without necessarily taking out the older housing stock. That replacement effect is real, and I think there are ways of managing that, such as, for example, some zoning efforts or rezoning efforts that would allow new housing to come online in places that right now don't allow housing at all. But that, again, takes a step back, and it means just a lot more permitting activity. And as we know, there's a lot of political resistance to that. So it does create a situation.
For example, the Times last week noted that an individual who happened to own a property, seven acres, at the end of a corridor, industrial corridor, but along the river, is now being, the housing that's being proposed is being resisted.
Yeah.
Even though its other use would be industrial.
Right.
So the two choices are industrial or housing, and yet people not even in the district are organizing to try to prevent that housing.
Right.
Let me, let me finish two things real quick. Strategies on homelessness, no, no. One is how do we get equity of distribution of affordability? So if you look at the maps, we got maps last week in planning, and you can see all the housing is in my district and Curran's district. I mean, it's all in the core of the city. It's not in the valley. It's not equally distributed. How do we get equity in the city and take advantage of these vast spaces? In some areas, we're building up and towers and creating incredible density, and others, you know, they're talking about gates for the horses. I mean, so it doesn't appear that we're short on property or land.
I would, I would agree with that. And your point is exactly right. A lot of it's about incentivizing and rezoning and pushing through some of the political resistance. But it's a tough battle.
And I think that's something that we can speak to, and we have our land use expert here.
So yes, and at the chamber, I mean, partly to answer Councilmember Bonin's question, we are, we have taken our land use committee and transitioned that committee to looks exclusively at affordability and what we can do in terms of the preservation, production, and protection aspects of housing. But you're right, it's about the better land utilization across the board. There will be upzoning or zoning aspects to it, but it's also about the incentive programs and where they align. Quite frankly, what we're finding in the discussions we're having is the way the incentives are set out today disincentivize building affordable housing at the middle or moderate or even the low income level in skewing towards the very low and thereby building the fewest amount possible. We think that the incentives need to be rethought, realigned, and by doing so, you'll start seeing in some of these new developments, a trend towards building more into both the workforce, the moderate, as well as the low income areas, which you're not seeing today.
And then finally, I have a sense that public space has an impact on business climate. I'm concerned, for example, we have an MTA system without a single restroom. We have parks without restrooms that function or that are open. We have bus stops without shade or shelter. I can't imagine that this is good for the, for the business climate, and I want to know how this relates to both homelessness. And then you wrote, I noted something called miserableism or miserability. And so the relationship between those three. Thank you.
Well, miserableism is a big concept I use, which has to do, I think, with the tone of the, of the national conversation, just how bad things are. And I think that acknowledging that things are really good right now and focusing on longer-term problems rather than these, these kind of short-term problems that don't exist is a good way of dealing and maintaining the current U.S. economic expansion. But particularly in the politics in DC, everybody's running around with their hair on fire, talking about the end of the world, as opposed to acknowledging that the vast majority of Americans are significantly better off today than they were a few years ago. I think we need to appreciate what we have. But again, that's the kind of miserable zone I'm talking about. We need to appreciate, we need to appreciate how good we have it and deal with the true long-run concerns, whether it has to do with gentrification or the sustainability of various sorts of entitlements and things like that. That's a separate conversation of what you said before, which has to do with public infrastructure. And I think the conversation about public infrastructure is dead on, particularly, you know, one of the issues we didn't really...
Hold on for just a second. We're not, we're not going, we're going to let him answer the questions. You have an opportunity to speak if you filled out a card.
There is, there is, of course, a very important opportunity right now for the city to continue to invest heavily in what I would call public infrastructure. And yes, some of that's light rail, but a lot of that would also have to do with, like you said, just making the city more accessible, having our parks improved and being more friendly and having the public infrastructure, such as bathrooms, out there. It is a challenge, but the city, I think, should be thinking more about putting that kind of money into those systems.
If I could just make a comment, let me jump in here because I think some of the questions that are being raised, not only by you, Councilman, but Councilman Bonin and others that have raised these issues about displacement, gentrification, all these are really tough issues. I want to take you back a little bit to maybe some of the, you know, inside conversation at the chamber. You know, for the chamber to really be a leader, we have to tackle these issues. I don't think there's an easy answer. I don't think it's something we can do on our own. But what I can commit to this body is to bring these forward, to bring these hard issues forward, and to engage in a conversation, to have meaningful outcomes of what could be a solution that we could drive forward, we being the chamber. I think that's, that sits squarely within our mission about us wanting to see a thriving region that is inclusive. If we're displacing our neighbors, we're not being inclusive. Our vision of having a thriving region for all, I mean, that, that, those are some big, bold words. And everything that you've all brought up here today are, challenges us to really meet that vision. But what I can commit to you is that we at the chamber will step out in front. And we'll have to step out in front, but we'll be able to do it with the business communities, with our educational institutions, and with all of you. Again, I think it's complex. I don't think it's easy. I don't think it's going to get done overnight. But I think as a chamber, we are in the best position to help lead on something like this.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and move on to Mr. Coretts, followed by Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Madam President. And my concern has already been mentioned several times, but I want to focus on it a little more, which is our attempt to rely on supply-side trickle-down economics, but in housing. I don't think it works any better in reaching the bottom than it does in supply-side economics, where we give huge tax breaks to the rich, and yet we see the most homeless we've ever seen across the country. I think if we do that here, there are a lot of people that want to move to Los Angeles. There are a lot of businesses that want to move to Los Angeles. And were we to build 500,000 units, I think we would find we have 500,000 new employees and new businesses and a lot of activity, and the same problem of unaffordability, if not worse, rather than better, and with the same infrastructure. So we have the same constraints, but now we have the traffic of an extra 500,000 people. I think with new housing also, and I've observed it anecdotally, and I think it's true beyond that, the housing that surrounds it that's not new also goes up in price. So in my neighborhood, my daughter happens to be in an apartment a couple of blocks away from me currently. We've had a bunch of large, dense Wiseman projects go up, and she's paying, I believe, $2,500 for a one-bedroom apartment. That when she moved into, I said, why are you paying $2,500 for a $900 apartment? But it's because everything else has brought the rates up. So we make unaffordable housing worse, we make traffic worse, and because of Costa Hawkins, whenever someone is displaced under the Ellis Act, there can't be another affordable unit. Any new unit can't be affordable. So they either wind up on the streets or moving outside of LA. And yes, our average household income goes up, as was pointed out, because we're forcing all the people that can't afford lower income housing out of the city once they get forced out. So, and one of my favorite examples, I think Seattle, which is considerably smaller than us, built 24,000 new housing units in a year. And the result was rents did go down about $2 a unit, the equivalent of, I don't know their population, us building 150,000 units in a year, really had virtually no impact. So my question for the chamber, having said all that, is what is your non-trickle-down supply-side answer to our housing shortage?
So there's, Councilmember. You said some things that are true in the sense that we face a reality, we're building our way out of this and relying solely on a supply-side mechanism isn't going to happen. We cannot both fill the gap that has been created over years of neglect, nor can we build, nor is there willingness or political willingness to build enough to even stem
build, nor is there willingness or political willingness to build enough to even stem the tide of what we need today. Recognizing that, we are stepping up into the area, and as Maria alluded to, working with a variety of constituents. As I said earlier, we have turned our land use committee into an affordable affordability committee. We are working with the faith-based community, and we're working with a panel of chief executive officers from across the country on finding the policies and mechanisms that people can accept or be willing to invest in to do exactly that. Mentioned a few of them. One, how do we, how do we look at the supply side that we had, as say, Mr. Sadio spoke about, where we are helping ensure that currently those units that are encumbered with affordability aren't lost? How do we ensure that those people who have not filled their affordable units within their complexes are incentivized or ensured that they do? Because we're allowing thousands of units to go unfilled. How do we then realign incentives to ensure that housing is being built at all levels? And then how do we look at zoning in a way that does incentivize the mechanism of non-displacement as an incentive for growth? Those are all policy initiatives that are on the table and that we're working towards and that we plan in the very near future to bring to both this body and to the community in asking how, and providing our idea of solutions. Because as Maria said, it is about a thriving economy for all, not just a thriving economy for business, but ensuring that everybody is served within our communities. And that is our mission, and that is our statement, and that is our value today.
And certainly, I would think building where there's non-displacement would be a good strategy, and it's one that I've tried to focus on in my district. And our only truly large development, which is around 600,000 units, was at an abandoned cement plant. So logically, we're not displacing anyone. We're not displacing a use. I've tried to encourage some of the developers that have been the worst actors in terms of demolishing rent-controlled units and forcing out tenants that can't find another opportunity within the city to move towards commercial areas where the uses are not thriving, like closed auto body shops, and build on the commercial sites rather than displacing residential. Those are a couple thoughts. I don't know if there's a way to zone so that we require new building to only be moderate and low-income. But if there are a way to do that, that would be the only way that people would be incentivized not to build luxury housing, because where you could build it, who wouldn't take more profit?
You do, one thing that I would ask you to recognize, that it is somewhat incumbent upon this body to look at those mechanisms. If you want to incentivize commercial development to be transitioned, commercial zones or underutilized commercial areas to be zoned into housing, the best step to do that is your willingness to change those zones in advance. Otherwise, what you're doing is increasing the cost of the housing that's going to come onboard if a developer does that. And that's the issue that you're facing and why some of the housing starts have not happened.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Lee, followed by Mr. Kukorian.
First of all, thank you for coming here. This is my first time hearing this report as a councilman, and I appreciate how informative it is. You know, I agree that, you know, when Councilman Sadio talks about his district, you know, feeling the burden of low-income housing, of affordable housing, and places like in the valley, we're not doing our part. I agree. CD-12 has to be a part of that solution. What I've found in working with so many developers is that with all the fees and regulations that we place on them, that it's, it's hard for them at the higher rents, higher cost of properties in CD-12 to be able to build that affordable housing. So I'm curious not only to know, since the chamber does represent so many people who build homes and build apartment buildings, A, what are those fees? What are, what are those really taxing fees that really add to those costs? But more important, that this, I believe, when I heard earlier, it's really important when I talk to developers in my district about finding places. I've actually shown them areas where, you know, but they first look at me, and the first thing they say is, is it by right? Can I go in there? No problems at all. I go, no, but, you know, you'll have a council office that is very supportive in you building this type of affordable housing. That predictability for companies is so important. And, you know, what we can do to take out some of that red tape as far as the ability from people who don't even live near these projects, to be able to appeal these projects that slow down creation, all those different things and barriers that people face, I'm, I want CD-12 to be a part of that solution. I want us to build that affordable housing units. We have areas in CD-12 that we are willing to build these, but the problem is they cannot come in. When they talk about building affordable housing, it's just prohibitive. And so I would love to work with you on what those fees are, but also on how we can provide more predictability. What is it we can take out of the equation so we can incentivize people to build these, you know, units in the valley and especially in CD-12?
Yeah, Councilman, thank you very much for that question. If there's one thing that I have learned as I've come on to this role, is that the chamber has that expertise, and the chamber has a very clear understanding of what are policies, regulations, fees that can stifle that type of growth. I'm going to pass it over to Jerry in just a minute, but I think that we, as a chamber, our bodies should be able to come forward and say, here's what we believe are the things that, you know, should be considered, should be reconsidered, you know, to really unlock, you know, the, that, that mechanism that is holding us back. But I'm going to pass it over to Jerry. He's a, we know his expertise, and I know he's just wanting to spell them all out to you, but I just wanted to get that in first. So go ahead, Jerry.
So Councilmember, look, we run at about, I think the number is, and I would want to make sure that I'm correct, so, but I think it's at about $24,000 to $25,000 a door in fees that are paid as part of the process. So that right there means that any apartment building that you're building, you're paying about $25,000 a door in fees alone. But you struck something that's really important, and that is time. Time is very important as, and stepping aside a little bit and putting my affordable housing development hat on as chair of an affordable housing group, what we find is the costs come in not in big jumps, but in the 1% to 5% issues. So for instance, when you have a department that sits on an application or a sign-off for more than a month or two months, it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. If you have a parks department that isn't coordinated with the planning department, and the fees that they're charging or asking to charge are not in line, and therefore settling that dispute takes another four months, hundreds of thousands of dollars. If you have a time, for instance, where, where there's a slow pay by the housing department to the contractors of affordable housing, the stock of affordable housing contractors is now down to about six in the city. So the bids that you get are higher priced because the market isn't fluid. So you're constantly having these little issues that relate to the ways in which the departments interact, the ways in which laws are interpreted by the departments, as well as the general policies that are, that are in effect that causes, cause fees to go up. And that combination is what's creating some of the volatility in housing increases. I'm not saying all of it, but some of it. And, and I think people are willing to pay the fees and absorb them. The problem is some of those time costs that really come into play. And I'm not even talking about the process of getting stuff through the process up to development. I'm just talking about the construction process alone.
Yeah, I think if we, like, develop systems, I think, you know, in Northridge, we have something called the Northridge Vision Plan, where if you do A, B, C, and D, you can build. If, as long as you follow these rules, you can build there, and the neighborhood councils won't, you know, fight this project. I can't speak to the rest of the public, or, you know, in the different areas, but at least you can get neighborhood council approval. And so that's something I think that's going to be really important that we look at and move forward to getting this done.
Chris said transparency and certainty are very important to folks.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Kukorian to close?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you all again. I guess we started off on a really positive note, so let me just kind of see if I can finish on a really positive note as well. First of all, Mr. Newman, the things that you just described in response to Mr. Lee's questions are, continue to be lingering problems that we have in increasing production of housing and all sorts of other business investments. But I think you would have to agree that over the course of the last six or eight years, there's been a lot of progress that's been made in the production-related departments in trying to enhance coordination among them. And I think we have a lot, a long way to go, but there has been progress because the city has recognized that, I think. I just want to mention a few of the things that the Ad Hoc Job Creation Committee has done in concert with the Economic Development Committee under Mr. Price's leadership. We've created and fully staffed now the centralized business unit, to your point about transparency and predictability. Shortly, the Small Business Commission will actually be appointed and up and running to be able to advise the council on issues that affect small businesses. We've streamlined and simplified the local business and small business preference programs. That's work that needs to continue. And in a moment, Ms. Linus, I'd like you to talk a little bit about procurement. The Comprehensive Citywide Economic Development Strategy is underway, and we'll lean heavily, I think, on some of the good work that you've done over these last 10 years, Chris, in helping to direct the direction of our economic development strategy. And of course, we've created the Jobs and Economic Development Incentive Zones, the Jedi Zones, which will be able to leverage all sorts of different incentives to enhance the affordability of doing business here and to encourage more business investment here. So there's a lot of important steps being taken along the lines of the transparency and predictability that I think Chris mentioned earlier, and the coordinated effort that you mentioned, Jerry, to try to bring the resources of government into partnership with the chamber in marketing Los Angeles as an important, and important place to do business and a good place to, to expand and to move. So with that, I would just like to ask Ms. Linus if you could talk a little bit about some of the procurement work that the chamber is working on with the city, as well as with the county, so that we can take further advantage of all the incredible opportunities that we have, from Measure M, the Olympics, so many other huge investments of public and private money that are coming into Southern California. Can you talk a little bit about how we're able to ride that wave for the benefit of small and large businesses in Los Angeles?
Yes. Thank you so much for asking me that question. You know, I was so excited with E-Commerce Week having been highlighted, and I use that to speak a little bit about our, you know, business-friendly, small-business initiatives that, while I had it in my notes and I failed to mention that. But just last week, we launched an initiative at the chamber called One L.A. And it's a platform, an initiative that aims to connect small, diverse, local businesses to opportunities here in Los Angeles for procurement. It's to improve access to those billions of dollars that are available at the county level, at any other public or private institution. This platform that we launched in connection with other partners and a funding partner with our Bank of City is able to create wraparound services. So for example, small business can launch into this platform, create their profile. And much like when you go shopping in Amazon and they know that you like, you know, a certain amount of, you know, food or shoes or whatever it is, it then comes to you, that's the thinking behind this platform. And with the ease and the simplicity of allowing small businesses to be able to create a profile, and then with the connection to other institutions, right now, we have L.A. County, who has committed to small investments, to small and local businesses in the terms of procurement. Those, those opportunities are within this platform. And once a small business creates their profile, they can then go in and see the opportunities that they have there for procurement, for a match to be made. One of the things that's important for the chamber is that not only we provide a technology solution, but that there's true, meaningful partnership outside of that, that there's one-on-one advising. We do that today. We help match several companies to procurement opportunities. So this is something that is very much top of mind for the chamber. We launched it last week. We've been working on this for the last couple of months. When we look at our small-business community, we know that there's two things that are issues for them, the access to capital piece and the procurement opportunities. And to the extent that we can work with partners like the city to help identify those procurement opportunities that will make it easier for small businesses to obtain a contract, that's our goal at the end of the day. We, we have such amazing, such an amazing small-business community within the chamber. And when we talk about, you know, the economic disparities, if we can create that system where they can earn a contract, I guarantee you that will change their economics. And that's what we're trying to do right now. And you're right, in the next 10 years, there's so many different activities that are coming onboard, that if we can start today and create that pipeline so that those matches are working by the time the Olympics come along, by the time all these other big athletic events come along, we should have a pipeline of small businesses that are able to participate, that are able to go for those bigger contracts that are available there. So for us, while we're launching this right now, what is success going to look like? Success is going to look like the fact that we can have businesses that can say, here's a match that I made, here's a contract opportunity that I was able to earn. So we're really working hard behind that. Thank you for bringing that up. We are also working in our biotech industry. Thank you. Jerry, did you want to jump in about that?
No, I just, and I did want to thank you because you noted, we are working with your biotech group on a Jedi Zone, and it is those sorts of initiatives, that coordination with the city that makes these differences and allows that to happen. And, and I think utilizing structures like that, or that as an example to what we could do across the city, would make a huge difference.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes, members on, that would like to speak. I want to thank all three of you for being here. Thank you very much. Like always, this is very informative. Thank you for being here.
Thank you all very much for having us. I really look forward to deepening that engagement with all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, members, let's go ahead and vote on reconsideration on item number four and five. Let's go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on item 23. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on item 19, but I'd like to make a motion to adopt Report C. Can I get a second? Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let's go ahead and take up special one. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. So special one was posted and circulated and on the kiosk for about an hour ago. Do we have any public comment cards on that item?
Don't seem like it.
No. In that case, if the council member wants to speak to the item, if the council member wants to take it up.
Mr. Buscaino, would you like to make comments on that? There are no cards on this item.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. On October 12th, colleagues of last year, this council vetoed an action of the Board of Harbor Commissioners that extended a lease with California Transload Services, previously known as Calcartage, for a city-owned warehouse located on port property at 2401 East PCH in Wilmington. CTS and the various subsidiaries and divisions of parent company NFI had repeatedly been found to be in violation of federal, state, and local labor, employment, and health and safety laws. And this council rightfully stood up to the rights of working men and women to wages they are legally entitled to, benefits that they are legally entitled to, and a safe working condition that they're also legally entitled to. Now, since the posting of today's agenda, the Board of Harbor Commissioners have posted an agenda for their regular meeting tomorrow, in which they will consider a revocable permit and... with toll, global forwarding, SCS, UCLA Incorporated, and the warehouse previously occupied by CTS Calcartage, which vacated the property on August 2nd. The proposed new tenant will be required to abide by the Port Service Contractor Worker Retention Policy, which requires them to rehire workers who were previously employed by the former tenant. In order to ensure as smooth transition as possible, and also to provide certainty to the new tenant, the workers and the Harbor Department, it is appropriate that this body to proactively waive our authority to assert jurisdiction and review the action under Charter Section 245, so that tomorrow's action by the Harbor Commissioner, Commission, rather, becomes final upon adoption. And the purpose of this is to ensure that we have a seamless transition, that we don't lose workers, and that the new tenant toll will be able to operate immediately. And this motion before you does just that, and this is why I ask for an aye vote. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. City Attorney?
So the first vote would be on the findings for the motion.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on the findings on this, on Special One. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Okay, now this item is before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Thank you very much. Just for the record, sit down, Mr. Spindler. The item was posted for over an hour. You had more than enough time to be able to fill out your cards.
Mr. Spindler, you're disrupting the meeting.
If you continue to disrupt the meeting, I'm going to have you removed.
Please be quiet. Okay, Mr. Previn, now you're disrupting the meeting.
Last, you filled out cards, I'll call you in just a second. Hold on. Mr. Previn, sit down, or I'm going to have you removed from the meeting.
So may I, they're both disrupting the meeting. May I suggest that we ask them both to leave quietly? All right.
Let's move on to multiple speaker cards. Mr. Herman?
I have not yet.
Mr. Herman, are you going to come over and speak or not?
This gentleman's blocking my way, lady.
Sit down, Mr. Spindler.
Sergeant of Arms is blocking my way. He's armed.
Mr. Herman, you're speaking with item number one, two through...
Kant. Number one.
Mr. Herman, you're disrupting the meeting. The presiding officer's speaking. Be quiet.
Items 34, 35 through 49. Go ahead, and your general public comment.
So the following hearing of protests and appeals, building and safety, the Los Angeles Administrative Code inverted the yields of our budget not to provide us what fair liens for nuisance abatement costs. Three hundred percent overcharges against the public is retaliation. The same retaliation I've been targeted by the city of Los Angeles, speaking about liens. And then in CD6, item 1A is a lien at 14451 Kant West Nordoff Kant Street for $11,0083.
Mr. Herman, all you're doing is reading the agenda and sticking in...
Hold his time, please, hold his time. Follow the rules, Herman. You know the rules. Please, continue.
Mr. Herman, do you want to continue or not? If not, we can forfeit your time right now.
It's your last warning.
Okay, I suggest we forfeit his time. He doesn't want to speak.
Okay, that'll be the order. Give him his one minute of general public comment.
So, case number 19STRO006853, Hugo Stephen Rossiter filed. However, my complaint made about alleged misconduct, as you heard and see, retaliation. Speaking on free speech is retaliation, pussy! And pussies like to fuck me on my unconstitutional right of fucking on a subject that matters of importance. Treason! Fucking treason on the First Amendment, because you fucking niggers, countrymen, hear me out! Can't do anything right. Clarence Brandenburg versus Ohio, U.S., 395, 1969, 42 U.S.C., 1983. Fuck you!
Herman, there's no need to scream in the microphone. Are we missing something here? You've been warned not to scream in the microphone several times. This is not your first rodeo, Herman. Next speaker we have Cory Schmidt. Please come forward. You'll be given three minutes on all the items that you've pulled, plus an additional one minute of general public comment. And like, let me remind you, stick to the items, the cards that you pulled. Otherwise, you'll forfeit your time. Thank you, Cory.
Cory Schmidt, for the record. Okay, so, pretty lengthy report we just heard. Speaking of the boomers retiring and the proclamation for Cocktober to be Italian-American Heritage Month, you know, and we're talking about fears of downturn in the housing market, well, I got the answer. Why we're, you know, there's fears of that is because people are fighting back. Number one, these liens, you know, there's nuisance properties that are out here that these fuckbags are coming in, and they're buying up properties, and they're raising the rents, and they're kicking people out, and then they fill it with people who are a nuisance, a public nuisance, and it makes the people around them leave their properties, and then they buy them up, and then they just continue the cycle, and then you're wondering why we have such an uptick of all these permits being thrown around. It's because, you know, there's just a lot of force-fucking going on. And I'm not, I'm not okay with it. You know, we're talking about construction negligence and delinquent accounts receivables. I mean, it makes me even think that there's some fishy stuff going on. So like, you know, sewer chemical route control, my God, is, I agree. We need to get this shit under control. I, you know, the, just, it's illegally dumping shit on our streets and in our neighborhoods. So, you know, I agree that we should have sequel appeals by lower tribunals, and I do think that we should be selecting, being very selective of who we allow to develop in our neighborhoods. So, you know, on that note, I just want to say that there's a bunch of items for police, additional police services, and I agree. And I also think that we should be motioning to get some in my neighborhood as well, which is West LA. I know that the guys were saying that we could use some more patrol cars. And then, let's go ahead and cancel that. Stormwater capturing, complete streets, oh, I was going to say the bike path on Cent, or Centinela and Gateway, we could use to redo that, and I'd like to work with you guys on the plan for that. And then, let's see, what else do I have to say? Mainly just the, we're talking about development here, and it's pissing me off because I'm dealing with it personally, and there's some people that are in power that aren't using their powers to the benefit of the community. And I can get into that a little bit later. So, let's see. I do think that we need to be considering the homeless...
Okay, Cory, you got your one minute of general public comment.
I just want to say I'm not against development. But as you can see, I'm the king of these assholes, you know, now, because I'm going to put everybody in check, because I'm tired of this shit. I'm shutting it down. So I want to speak on what we just heard right now. Increase in median income, you know, that tells me that we got mad gentrification going on. The goal is to constantly grow the economy, and we're competing with the rest of the country, but like, what are, in this competition, what are we winning? You know? It's increased housing, increased housing, but what's, what about quality of life? You know, there's no yards, there's no open space, there's nowhere for people to hang out. People, these developers build to the property line, like, literally no setbacks. And then you wonder, it's just, it's like a prison. It's like concrete canyon prison, and I just see it coming. It's disgusting.
Thank you. Molly Bell?
Molly, you pulled items one through three and items 34 through 49. You'll be given three minutes to speak on those items, and then your one minute of general public comment.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. I wanted to speak basically on 34 and 43, but on 34, I want to say to all you council people that we in the community, we voted you in. We want you to have your jobs and be our voice. I'm concerned that because of gentrification and the things that were brought up by the L.A. city chambers, that black voices are going to be silenced. They're going to be silenced because when you bring in richer folks to move in all the houses, when you tear down buildings and put up more buildings for commercial use, when you make your land for stables for horses, then people won't be there. They will not vote. You guys need to be scared. You need to be afraid, very, very afraid, because there are people who are bringing in new people, and those new people are not going to vote for you guys. You're going to lose your jobs. So I wanted to just bring that up so that you can see what's going on. Gentification is real. They brought up the best black districts, nine, 10, and 11, and we saw that they all had lots of problems, and they keep saying that the economy is great. I asked the L.A. chamber, say that as you walk out the front door of City Hall over all the homeless people, how great it really is. They talk about how much the houses are worth and who they're putting in them. They're taking us out. We have a center in our community called the Afibah Center, and we need you on number 43 to use some of that money to improve it, build it up. We need a kitchen there. We need some land there. We need some better things there. So we're asking you on number 43, Kern Price, I'm sorry he's not here, Herb West, I mean, Kern Price is the only one that's here, Herb Weston's not here, Marquise Harris-Dawson, and that's those great districts of ours. But I'm saying to all of you Latinos and Asians, when white folks, and I don't mean no disrespect, but you know who's going to live in those houses, when they come in, you're out. And if you're out, my voice is going to be choked, and you won't hear what I have to say. So be afraid. I'm afraid, but I know that God has not given me the spirit of fear, but of power, love, and a sound mind. So I'm asking you to consider and think about the things that you are doing, because it is not in our best interest, because you guys are going to be gone, and you did it yourself.
Thank you. Okay, you're given your one minute of general public comment.
My public comment is that I am here in support of the Afibah Center, one of the most important African-American firefighters' building on this planet. And we have been given some eviction notice while we're not clear what it is. And we're asking this city council and those who can help to do everything to keep the Afibah Center, which is African firefighters, in benevolent association. There's no place in Los Angeles where you see the word "African" and "firefighters" together. So keep that, keep Brother Jabari in control, because this is what we need. I close by saying, all you prayer warriors out there, you know what you've got to do. You've got to keep fasting, you've got to keep praying, because the struggle continues. But always, to God be the glory, I'm Molly Bell, and I'm straight out of Compton, and I approve this message.
Thank you. All right, Wayne? Wayne Spindler, come on up. Same drill, three minutes of the cards that you pulled, and one minute of general public comment.
Welcome back. Shalom, bloodsuckers. Nah.
Stop his time. You need to speak to the items. This is your last warning. Otherwise, you'll be asked to sit down. Thank you.
So number 1A. No, you fucking cunt on 1A. West Nordoff Street, $11,000 fucking fine. What, even Monica agrees with this? This is outrageous. Outrageous. We had a community meeting last night about this, for the record, after sundown. Shalom. Now, we look at this lien. What is the meaning of this amount of money? Nobody's ever gotten anything this big. Bigger than anything that I've seen, bigger than Acme Padilla, bigger than the Mount Rushmore of this piece of shit city. It's an outrageous amount of money. Outrageous. Every council member that bothers to still show up here should be outraged at 1A. How can you do this, Gil? How can you do this, Paul and Paul? How can you do this, Mr. Lee? This is outrageous. And you have to stop this fucking shit. This is the fucking shit that people are talking about. That's why they keep emailing usdoj.gov/fbi. I mean, this is what happens. Please, get rid of this lien from this fucking cunt. Now, number two, another fucking cunt, Canoga Park Service Station. This was approved in 2014, but Blob Blob and Blew, AKA Bob Bloomenfeld, or whatever they call his name, had to get more campaign donations. So what did he do to the Canoga Park Service? It's a gas station, basically. What did he do? He wanted more money to his office holder account, and then a donation to a local nonprofit, and they had to do it. Why? Because the city's a corrupt piece of shit, that's why. Because Blob Blob and Blew is a piece of shit. Because the planning department is a piece of shit. Because the council president is a piece of shit. Because Mike Fear's a fucking piece of shit. Because the city attorney that works up there is a piece of shit. Who represents us? Where are you, Chamber of Commerce? Where are you? When are you going to stop the pay-to-play scheme, you fucking cocksuckers?
One minute, general public comment.
So now, the one minute. I signed up on Special One, Italian nigger. I signed up, and I yelled my intention from the back to sign up. I am not required to fill out a form, Mr. Flobble, Flable, Fleable, Flobble. I am not required. I announced my intention to speak. You violated the Brown Act, you white fucking Jew nigger attorney, by doing what you did. You have to stop fucking breaking the fucking law, using a bar card and a badge. You need to stop that shit. I know what power is. I know what you got a badge, I know what you can do with it, but you motherfuckers sit there with your fucking fat mouth, with your fat hand in front of it. All right? So join Herb Weston, put a cigarette in that tiny little nigger fucking mouth of yours, and go fuck off.
All right, Eric Previn, come on up. Three plus one? Eric, three minutes. Same routine.
Well, it's Eric Previn from Studio City, and obviously, this is in protest, because I wanted to speak on the Chamber of Commerce report, which was an item that was exposed, and yet you've pushed me to the very back in a cluster. So I don't think that's appropriate. You know, we've been tracking very carefully the average annual wages, and once again, it is very upsetting to report that Mr. Harris-Dawson, who didn't have the courage to show up today, has the lowest average wages of $26,000 in the entire city. It is painful to see. And Council President Weston, who was at a labor event, believe it or not, lathering himself up with endorsements, experienced a 12.4% decrease in annual wages in CD10, which even Mr. Beacon was able to identify some reason, though we couldn't hear it, about why so many... why so many people have taken a hit there. I guess they lost a bunch of kinds of jobs. It's heartbreaking how certain sections of the city are just unable to get the kind of traction and growth as others. Now, Mr. Coretts, who is a fussy little fellow who likes to lie about what the homeless people are up to, but here's a guy who has a district where they're raising, where the annual wages is $102-plus thousand versus that $26,000 in Mr. Harris-Dawson's district. So this is just, that's what we're dealing with here, okay? And it's great to hear, Bonin, while we have a big labor rollout at LAX causing hundreds of thousands of Angelino's burden and cost, and everybody says there's no cost to these things, and yet, here we go again. And maybe that's where Weston is. It's just, it's very, very bad. Now, to be fair to Mr. O'Farrell, he did see an enormous uptick in annual wages of almost 10%. That's where they're putting these luxury condos, one after the other, after the other. It's very, very sad. Now, I will say this, sir, in terms of business practices, which is what the chamber should be looking at, not just-- and by the way, it's Herb Weston who funds that report, for the record. He put it together, and now, he's trying to get them to do it at the county, too, because everybody likes a perky report where Krikorian can jump up and remind us of how great it's going. But, and by the way, today, or tomorrow, there was a special meeting called for the MOU with UFLAC, or whatever, the Fire Department Union. They're going to give all those guys another big raise, and we should know about it, but we've only had 24 hours, so let's look and figure out what is going on there. But I want to, yeah, the business practices, Motorola, you've got a $5.3 million foundation donation from the LAPD Foundation, but it's well-understood that Motorola, an Englander, Kenobi, and Allen little entity, not entity, but they're repped by that firm, give prodigiously to both the LAPD and the L.A. Fire Department, you know, foundations. So this is just lubricating the way for their continual ripping off of the public of both L.A. City and L.A. County. Here, when you sat there, Mr. Buscagno, next to your friend Englander, and pointed to the RFP at the county, and the county said, "There was no RFP. We piggybacked on it, and it's all bull crap."
Okay, thank you. One minute, general public comment.
Oh, thank you, sir. The general public comment has to be about why, in this hall, we settle a $6.7 million retaliation lawsuit today. Retaliation. That means when people stand up, like I try to do, I don't work for the city, and say something that's true, or say, "Hey, we've got a problem over here," this building, under your leadership, Mr. Buscagno, convulses like a strange muscle and violates the rights of those people over and over again. And it's Mr. Krikorian's leadership, and Mr. John Lee, who today has $120,000 of discretionary money in his district, right into LAPD. You just support the folks who vote and get you hired, and you don't fix the problems. And this retaliation stuff is, could not be a better example of the revolving door. And Mr. Flobble, I have to tell you, sir, Mr. City Attorney is in serious trouble, not you personally, but Mr. Fier, because you're engaging in some practices with other attorneys that's going to backfire big time. And I know you're being looked at closely, so I'll find him. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Moses? Is there a Lynn Moses? Please come forward. Okay, you'll be given three minutes on all the items you pulled, and then one minute of general public comment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, welcome.
Regarding, comments regarding the Chamber of Commerce, some of their comments in item thirty-five. We can solve some of these problems. I don't know what this guy is talking about as far as everything is so rosy. We have homeless people, we have half the homeless population here in Los Angeles. Who's responsible for that? The buck has to stop somewhere. Where does it start? It starts with you, you gentlemen, and you ladies, every one of you, you and the mayor. You are the stewards of the public's money. You are responsible. You are responsible, not Donald Trump. You all like to talk about Trump like a campaign slogan, to bolster up how great you are and what we should be doing. You people, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Bloomfield, Bonin, Buscagno, Sadio, Harris-Dawson, Hoizar, Coretts, you people are responsible, and the puppet master, the mayor. Why don't we tie your salaries? You default, you give up, you give up your salaries unless the homeless problem is really solved, because you started it. You give up your salaries, I guarantee it will be solved. Will you do that? I don't think so. You have the, Weston, the item number forty, the Cumulus Project, zero affordable units on Weston. This is, these are things this guy approves. Dawson, no units are affordable when the median income is $20,000, $30,000 in that area, but they put, you all put your name on these projects. You are responsible for the homeless outside this building. Every one of them. But you line your pockets with developer money, every one of you. You're responsible. No one else. How do you sleep at night? Put your salary up.
Thank you, sir. You've got one minute, general public comment.
We have a representative form of government. The problem in my community, the black community, is we have no representation. That's our number-one problem. Mark Ridley Thomas, Herb Weston, and this guy, empty seat. He's an empty seat, Marquise Dawson, when he's sitting in it. He does not represent us. These people don't represent us. Mr. Price, Europe found on the internet cheesing over at the new development at Honda. There's one black employee in there out of about sixty. We're going to be on you to fix that. The Afiba Center will not go down. We will be burned out of there before we leave. Tell Dawson that, to stop attacking our community.
Okay, Ms., your time's up. Your time's up, thank you, sir. Is there Maria Luna here? Maria Luna? There Dr. Mellow Desri? Good morning, or what is it? Good afternoon. So ma'am, you have three minutes on all the cards that you pulled, and then one minute of general public comment.
So, we have a homeless crisis. You have a multimillion-dollar film crew for Pennywise and Showtime right outside the doors. The funny thing is, there's a homeless encampment right in front of the scenery. Are they going to cut that out? The Chamber of Commerce was a joke. I couldn't even get the booklet. They told me I have to pay $25 for that little catalog of what the Chamber of Commerce does. So if you guys are going to gorge out those who are a certain tax bracket, and we're watching developer after developer who don't look like us coming into our neighborhoods, let me tell you something about CD-8. CD-8, you have Manchester and Vermont that Mark Ridley Thomas and Marquise Harris-Dawson took from Eli Sassooni two years ago, and it's still empty. Dirt everywhere, you've got clothes hanging everywhere, looking like a Mexican market. That's Manchester, Vermont. But instead of fixing Manchester, Vermont, you want to go to Crenshaw and Slauson, you want to gentrify other areas, you want to push people out, and you're biting too much, you can't chew. You're biting off too much, you can't chew. Right now, Lhasa, you have money for rapid rehousing. I believe that's agenda number fifteen. Rapid rehousing. The only rapid rehousing you have is Hoppix. Hoppix spends 90% of the money in staffing. The Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority hired 20 new people, and you've got a homeless crisis. So they're making six figures, and Peter Lynn is looking like a surf boy coming off the beach. You've got people from the Valley that are caseworkers. This is horrible. And you're putting all this money into Lhasa, who failed in engagement? They failed 6%. They're supposed to make 25%. That means they're not out there even talking to the homeless to house them. But you want to keep funneling this joint authority with city, state, and federal funding to do nothing? Can we stop blowing smoke up our asses right now? We are tired of hearing immigrant power, empowerment, hate crime, and you're leaving the blacks left to die. The Afiba Center has been there for the community, and we would like for you to respect that. Not all black people are dumb.
Okay, hold your time, please. Would you like to go into general public comment next? Otherwise, stay to the items, ma'am. Okay, stick to the items that you pulled. Go ahead, and then you'll be given, you have another minute.
Yeah, let me finish talking about the incompetence of Lhasa. So you have a Lhasa Commission Board on Friday that did nothing. These people are not paid. They don't even care. They're volunteers. So any issues that Lhasa don't do, the commission sits there and be like, "I hear you," and does nothing. So can, as we mentioned before, give up your paychecks so you can fix the homeless crisis, because it's not working right now.
Thank you. Let's get our one-minute general public comment.
The African firefighters in benevolence. Benevolence means to give good. Good, meaning doing good. I can't remember for the last 30 years in South L.A. what good looked like, from LAPD to sheriffs to our city politicians, who have more money to buy packs of cigarettes than fix a goddamn homeless crisis. You've got empty lots all up and down Normandy, Vermont and Western, sitting there for Pakistani Indian 7-Elevens that are going to be there two, three years. We're going to snatch some properties. We're just letting you know, we're not waiting for you to make a decision while you're figuring out this bogus impeachment. We are actually going to be building housing, so when you guys are ready, you let us know what property we can and can't use, because we're not asking anymore come 2020. We're going to start building housing while you guys sleep, take care of your families with the tax-paying dollars, so you can look well while you look down on us. Shame on you. Shame on you, Skid Row, Marquise Harris-Dawson is not even here. Go figure. You guys are a joke.
Thank you. All right, members, let's, um, let's take some items now, um, let's take items thirty-five through thirty-eight. No speakers on the queue. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Let's now take items forty through forty-eight. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved, too. Okay, let's now take item number thirty-nine.
Mr. President, just for the record, there's a substitute motion for thirty-nine. It's been posted and circulated, and it's before council now.
Okay, members, thirty-nine is now before us. Let's vote on the substitute motion first. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Let's now take thirty-nine. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved.
Mr. President, there's also, item forty-nine is available for voting for council.
Let's do that. Let's, we have, we have public comment on forty-nine?
Oh, sorry. You have card.
All right, let's do forty, oh, for multiple. All right, let's do multiple cards. Mike Greenspan, please come forward. So, Mike, you pulled items one, two, and three. You'll be given three minutes to speak on those items, and then one minute of general public comment.
Mike, excuse me. Mike Greenspan, a five-and-o Florida Gator, UCLA. I don't. Well, let us now look at this number one. And it's about building and safety. And there's an item that happened to me about five years ago. I was watching the city council meeting, and John Walsh, rest in peace, lit a fire under me. What happened? He talked about the rent escrow account. And after the meeting, I went out to the parking lot. I passed by some construction at our building, and asked, "What are you, what are you doing?" "Oh, we're building an exercise room." And I called up 311, and I gave our address, and you can call 311 and ask if anybody has a permit when you see construction going on. I actually called one in a couple of years ago in Paul Coretts's district, and it turned out they had no permit. They were jackhammering at 7:30 in the morning without a permit, on Orange Street. So yes, all you have to do is call 311, give them the address, and find out. We had an inspector come out the next day. It turned out they never got the exercise room because they never got the permits. I mean, even the Ku Klux Klan gets a permit for a rally. Can't they at least have the decency to get a permit to build something in this town? Now, the liquor. Good old Herb Weston, the preacher pushing liquor. What else can I say? One of these is actually from my neighborhood, from my very zip code, 91605. Yes. And I could tell you, I could crawl two tenths or three tenths of a mile in each direction to already buy liquor, but the one over there on Van Owen in the East Valley is, you know, it, they don't really need it. And of course, the one over there in the West Valley, I think that's at Topanga and Van Owen. I think that's the Union 76, and it's next to a mall that's died, just waiting for the record ball to tear it down, over there at Canoga Park. So I don't know why, maybe Herb Weston's got a conflict of interest that he's always pushing liquor. Well, what do I mean he's got a conflict of interest? Well, he's in the liquor business with a guy named Michael By out of Torrance, so maybe he's supplying these places he's getting, getting the permits for. I, I mean, I just can't see any other reason. Where I come from, real preachers, actually, if they were on the city council, they would not vote for a liquor license for any reason, no matter how many members of the council voted for it. But when you get these hypocrites like Herb, well, preacher pushing liquor again, what do you expect? Baby killers, take, take the rest of the time. I'll go to general public.
Give Ms. one minute, please. Thank you.
Another, another great loss for our taxpayer-funded Bruins, another, at our expense and at the expense of homeless support services. I mean, we're, we're giving tens of millions of dollars for a losing cause that's never, ever going to recover. It's time that we take our flavor of the month, the homeless issue, that keeps having the same flavor each month, and actually use it for homeless support services, because, come on, are the Bruins going bowling this year? Only if they go to the bowling alley. I mean, what can I say about your Bruins that hasn't been said already? I mean, at least one thing with the new year, they can't lose any more games this last year. Now they're losing them in a new year. And your Bruins, well, they do the Streff and Bobble and suck a dick.
Wendy, Wendy Birch? Last call for Wendy. How about Myleene Carberry?
And while the speaker's coming up, Mr. President, I suggest we tell Mr. Herman to be quiet and to stay seated. He's been moving around in an obvious attempt to distract us and draw attention to himself. It's difficult to pay attention to the speakers when he's doing that.
Okay, we've given him several warnings, so Sergeant, please, Mr. Herman.
Before you start, my time, can I just?
Hold on, ma'am, hold on. We've got to get Mr. Herman out here, he's disrupting this meeting.
Mr. Herman, you've been asked, you were warned repeatedly, the presiding officer's asked you to leave.
Thank you.
Now you're making noise and disrupting the meeting. I suggest we order him removed.
Very good.
Mr. Herman, you've been ordered removed.
Sorry, ma'am, we have a disruption. Continue to disrupt this meeting. Herman?
And Mr. Herman's still disrupting the meeting. I'm sorry, we have to wait till he's gone. And he's still disrupting the meeting.
Ms. Carberry, sorry for the disruption. We're going to take an item before you begin speaking, okay?
And now, Mr. Herman's shouting to the point where he can't possibly conduct any business. All right, he's out. All right, he's out.
Okay, item 49, members, let's take item 49. Let's open the roll on 49, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item 49 is approved. Okay, Ms. Camber, thanks so much. Carberry, sorry. Thanks for your patience. Sorry for the disruption.
Before you start my time, I'm just asking, am I speaking? Because we signed up, I signed up for 34 and general.
We have you on item 34.
And general.
And general. So you got one plus one.
Okay, so I'll do the first and then I'll do the second.
Wonderful. Thanks for your patience.
Okay, I'm with Unrig LA. So the Chamber of Commerce shows the deep inequity about, that runs through LA. Council District 11 has a median household income nearly three times that of CD 8 and 9. And 5, nearly half of the unemployment rate of CD 8 and 9. We know that this difference reflects the quality of the classrooms of our children since the quality of schools depends desperately upon parent associations fundraising for their schools. But communities that are financially challenged will not be able to make up where LAUSD falls short. This is unfair to our students. The same comes to housing. More and more, we see wealthy developers displacing the most vulnerable communities for economic gains. Communities are not uplifted to share the economic wealth of this city but are displaced to serve the corporate shareholders of developers. These, these inequalities are held solidly in place by allowing...
Please hold her time, hold her time. I'm so sorry. We're still have a disruption from outside the chambers on, um, from...
Can you put me back 10 seconds?
From Herman. Okay, give her two seconds back.
Two?
Just wanted to...
Okay. These inequalities are held solidly in place by allowing non-individual contributions to campaigns.
Okay, give her one minute, general public comment.
Okay, so the LA City Council needs to stop delaying, reform, and ban corporate contributions, allowing developers and corporations to contribute to campaigns, encourages an atmosphere of cronyism and corruption. Here's an example of our current system. Two and a half years ago, I was at city council, listening to council member address a group of middle schoolers, of which homeless people, there was a few students that were homeless. And our city councilman was saying how well we were working to eradicate homelessness. At the same, the same time, Elias came out with an article that said that there was a huge amount of money allocated by the taxpayers to address building for the homeless. But the developer, given that, given that money, made a housing that only addressed 10 to 20% of the homeless and the rest was mixed income and market rate housing. And so I personally believe that developers like this that do not address what taxpayers are asking for, they have, they hold sway because they're allowed to contribute.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Lenick, please come forward. Is there a Mr. Lenick? Okay, Rob Quan. Is there a Rob Quan in the audience? Please go forward. Good afternoon.
While the speaker's coming forward, I'd just like to put on the record, the previous speaker was interrupted by Mr. Herman making enough noise outside the closed doors at the back of the chamber that we couldn't hear the speaker.
Thank you for that, Claire. Thank you so much. Mr. Quan, item 34, you all have one minute to speak and then one minute on general public comment.
The Chamber of Commerce report shows just how deeply an inequality runs through this city. Gross receipts in our wealthiest districts can be 10 to 30 times as high as our poorest districts. CD 5 has an educational attainment rate nearly 10 times as high as CDs 8 and 9. Meanwhile, voter participation has plummeted. Faith in government has been shaken by multiple FBI investigations. Voters didn't trust this council with a public bank. They didn't trust LAUSD with increased funding for EE. And I wonder, in five years, if we came back to the voters and asked for more money to fight homelessness, whether or not they would pony up. You talk about the battle of the soul of the nation, but let's focus on the job in this city. The batter, battle for the full soul of this city where people who would otherwise be warm-hearted have grown cold towards the homeless and in some instances even violent. The lack of trust in government undermines everything that we're trying to do. For my general public comment, there's a valid policy debate about whether we should ban contributions from all...
Hey, give Ms. one minute, one minute general public comment.
There's a debate as to whether we should ban all contributions from non-individuals. But let's be real, most of you are just scared shitless of the Police Protective League and IBW. Politics can trump policy. Nevertheless, that shouldn't be the end of the conversation. We should be able to agree that corporate money presents a unique threat. LLCs in particular offer the perfect vehicle for political money laundering. We've seen this play out repeatedly here in the city of LA with Alan Caston, Mark Abrams, the Seabreeze Development, and numerous ongoing investigations happening right now. For example, with LLCs, in 2013, Mayor Garcetti received six contributions from real estate companies with the same CEO. In that same cycle, Councilmember O'Farrell received dozen, a dozen contributions from companies run by the same individual totaling $6,500. Transparency two and a half years later, after Election Day, does us no good.
Thank you. Sean Mc, I'm sorry, we're going to take items one through three now, members.
Mr. President, for the record, there's a motion on item three and is circulated and before council.
Very good. So with that, let's open the roll, items one through three. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, those items are approved. Okay, back to multiple cards. Sean McMorris. Sean, please come forward. You pulled item 34. You'll be given one minute to speak on item 34, then one minute of general public comment. Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, hello, I'm, I'm with Represent Us, the Los Angeles-St. Gabriel Valley Chapter. I just want to say I'm discouraged that an organization like the Chamber was given unlimited time up here today, an organization that represents the owners of wealth, while the rest of us, all of us, the creators of wealth, i.e. labor, get one minute to respond. So I just ask that you put their, you know, you, you, you put their report and their interpretation of the data into some perspective. I hope that next time they'll allow some nonprofit 501(c)(3)'s or some independent economists to come up here and give their interpretation of this data that was presented. Because job growth, what kind of jobs? Part-time? Are they providing health benefits? If someone's working two or three part-time jobs with no healthcare, that's not progress. Which brings me to my next general comment, which is about money in politics.
Hey, just one minute. Go ahead.
I was very discouraged to see that the city council decided to kick the can down the road on the non-individual ban on campaign donations. So the, most LLCs are registered in the state of Delaware because the state of Delaware doesn't require an organization to say who their owner is. Not only does that allow for money laundering, it allows foreign entities to also contribute to campaigns without anyone knowing about it, which is illegal. There are 22 states and the federal government bans corporate campaign donations in politics. There's no reason why Los Angeles should not do the same thing. The owners of LLCs can donate out in the open transparency as individuals, just like everybody else. It's time for LA to move on this issue and stop delaying out of convenience, do the right thing, and ban corporate campaign donations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members, we're now going to take item number 34. Item 34 is now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Very good. Mr. Kukorian, I believe you need to continue item.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could continue item 51 until October 11th, please.
Without objection.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this portion of the meeting will have a general public comment. For those who pulled a general public comment card, let's start with Mike Horwitz. You'll be given one minute, followed by Ms. Jessie Norman. Is Ms. Norman here? You can make your way up if you are here. How about Lauren Natoli? Please come forward. Thank you. Okay, one minute. Thank you.
What I want to talk about is controlling firearms. All civilian firearms must be linked to local law enforcement by a global positioning device. That way, law enforcement will have the one-up when firearms get too close to a school or other vulnerable location. Now, of course, the people have a Second Amendment right to have a firearm in their home if they live next to a school. That can't be stopped. But law enforcement must be on the lookout for those people and their firearms. And we can pay for that. If there are 400 million firearms and it costs about $100 to put something on GPS, that's $40 billion, which could be saved if we go to universal healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lauren Natoli. Is there a Dr. Humphries? Please come forward, ma'am. Thank you. Jabari Jemani, please come forward. Ms. Natoli?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Lauren Natoli from the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. The astronomical rate of homelessness and the incredible high vulnerability for middle and working-class residents to continue to afford housing are the dangerous consequences of trickle-down housing policies and should be evidence enough for us to shift to community-based solutions like rent control. Los Angeles, as one of the nation's most densely urbanized areas, needs to stand behind these types of solutions as we continue to navigate the housing crisis. Those working to support our communities at the foundation are being erased. Los Angeles is a rich city with an iconic identity because of its people. It's time we put them in their livelihoods first. Housing is a human right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a Tonya Edwards? Please come forward. Dr. Humphries?
Yes.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Gillem Humphries. Councilman Harris-Dawson and Los Angeles City Council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Afibah Center. Just recently, I served as an ambassador of distinguished college for Ethiopia. One of 20 U.S. scholars selected to participate in a bi-national higher education capacity building initiative for Ethiopia. I am also a distance learning professor with the African Studies Program at the University of Toledo and a 15-year National Lawyers Guild member. Most importantly, I was born and raised in Balden Hills, Crenshaw District, and I'm a resident of the area. The Afibah Center is an anchor institution in the black community. More specifically, it represents the collective voice of the black nationalist grassroots community and often denigrated and neglected constituency. I would hope as an elected public official representing your constituents, come first of emunyied interest in developers for the express of citizens' wellbeing as a global phenomenon, as I also witnessed in Ethiopia, the displacement of local communities and massive loss of land and identity. This moral breach must be placed, repaired, to reestablish trust in government and its public officials. Please understand your actions do not only reflect on you but also on your mentor Congressman Cameron Bass, respected city council members, and our U.S. foreign policy as our government. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You've received my copy.
Thank you. Jabari?
Yes.
Hold on, sir. Is there a Hankerson Inok? Please come forward. How about a Renee Hopwood? Please come forward. Okay, sir, thanks for joining us. You have one minute.
Good afternoon. My name is Jabari Jemani. Once again, I am joining you here and standing in solidarity with the men and women you've seen over the past few weeks in calling for the rescinding of the eviction notice delivered to us by our illustrious councilman Marquise Harris-Dawson to affect the programming at the Afibah Center. Since he, in fact, is not here, I'll appeal to the goodwill of all other council people here. We will join with any of us and any of you of goodwill and work toward keeping our center open and keeping this very viable in the city of Los Angeles. We will, as we have extended many times here at this podium, an attempt to reach an agreement to keep this from getting larger than it needs to. And at this point, we can all see, it has gotten larger than it needs to. Thank you for your time, your effort, and any of you feel free to reach out to us. We are stakeholders in this city and we can all work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hankerson? Is there a Kath Rogers? Please come forward. Kath, thank you.
Can I go?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. We, the people, would not allow Marquise Dawson, Herb Wilson, and others sell out to Uncle Tom's, Uncle Ruckus', to attack and close our own community and culture center, the Afibah Center. Almost all black community organizations oppose the Destination Crenshaw Genderification Project. We're allergic to that. After refusal of Uncle Tom, Uncle Ruckus', Mark, Riley, Thomas, white councilperson, Ruth Galister contracted with Brother Jabari to open our community culture center, the Afibah Center. Bernard Parks, Nora Marquise Dawson has given not one penny of assistance to the Afibah Center. Clearly a disgrace, a disgrace. Now Marquise Dawson is attacking the culture and well-being of the black community by attacking the Afibah Center with evictions in order to whitewash the community's identity with the ridiculous Disneyland-ish Destination Crenshaw genderification projects that we're allergic to.
Thank you. Your name, please?
Renee Hopwood.
Ms. Hopwood, thank you. Kath Rogers, followed by Phyllis Scott. Phyllis Scott in the audience?
I'm coming here to speak about the Afibah Center.
Yes, ma'am. You have one minute. Thank you so much. You may begin. No, go ahead.
Yeah, moving this out the way so I can get closer to the mic.
Can you start her clock again, please? Thank you.
My name is Renee Hopwood. I'm an honorary discharge African-American female Vietnam veteran. I've lived in this community over 30 years. I was born here, raised here in this community. And the Afibah Center has been the black voice of our community and our residents for several years now. And by attacking it and trying to dismiss it, dismantle it, or run it is an affront to this community. And also on the park of Lemur Park, that park is a beating heart of Lemur community and its residents. We were not questioned or asked about putting a fence up, and the excuse that it was to control the homelessness is ridiculous. That's the only park they put a fence around to control homelessness. Why is not a fence around all the other parks? These things like this is what's causing us as residents and black community to have no confidence in you or any other public, any affinity.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Kath Rogers? Is there a Carolyn Connor? Carolyn Connor, please come forward, followed by Kim Yergin. Is Kim here? Thank you, ma'am. Please come forward. Ms. Rogers, go ahead, one minute. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Kath Rogers. I'm here on behalf of the National Lawyers Guild Los Angeles. We're the oldest human rights bar association in the country, and today we're here in strong support of the Afibah Center, the African Firefighters in Benevolent Association. And for number, for over 20 years, or for nearly 20 years, Afibah has provided vital services to the community, including CPR, disaster training, economic workshops, important cultural programming, Seven Days of Kwanzaa celebration, internationally acclaimed guests. They have a longstanding license agreement with the city that calls for them to perform public services classes and programming, which they've done for decades. They received a notice of revocation on August 9th, and that's the first time that Afibah learned of the city's notice to terminate with no discussion, no explanation as to why. We urge the city to meet with Afibah and all of the stakeholders to preserve this important cultural institution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Is there a Jaclyn Richardson? Thank you so much. Please come forward. And then a Herbert Allen Jones? Carolyn Connor?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us. Good afternoon.
I'm also obviously representing the Afibah Center, and it's a place that, it's a place of community. And I've listened to all the talk today, and I heard a lot of big words bandied around, but I don't really have a lot of confidence that any of these issues will be handled, particularly the homelessness, and it gets, it's all tied in together to gentrification. But the Afibah Center has been there for 20 years, is very clean, it's a place for the whole community to come together. And as has previously said, I urge everyone here to ask your colleague, who is absent and who doesn't seem to want to meet with us, to please handle this matter so that we don't have to continue to make this an issue. We should be able to keep that center in the community. Other communities have cultural centers, and we should as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[537.66][537.66](APPLAUSE). Ms. Yergin?
Yes, Kim Yergin?
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak here. Again, Marquise Harris Dawson is not here. I was here the last time when he was in Washington, D.C., giving a speech about how to preserve black and undeserved communities. Well, his, his idea of preserving black and undeserved communities is the displacement of, I'm in support of the Afibah Center, is to the displacement of a 25-year community and cultural social center in, in the community with an eviction notice. To push his, whatever you want to call it, Destination Crenshaw, which is pushing out businesses, is not preserving the community, and it's not an insurance that would help anything in the community. This 1.3 mile open air. Thank you.[607.29][607.29](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Ms. Richardson, please come forward. Sir, Deborah Adewale? Deborah Adewale, please come forward.
This is in regard to the homeless. I contend that one-half of the homeless in this city are Russian or from Russia. If you want to know the truth about the Russian presence in this city, ask the white people. Don't ask the black or the Hispanics. Ask the white people. I contend that Russia is one of the richest nations in the world today. They have more money than United, than the United States, all the way around. The Russian people, they come here because they want jobs. The jobs here are paid more than the jobs in Russia. And they're also here because they love the weather. The weather is much better, as far as I know.
Thank you. Is there a Tabiti Umoja? Please come forward. Fred Jones, please come forward. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good afternoon.
All right. I'm here to speak in support of the Afibah Center, and I'd like to pose these questions to the city council. Why, during this time of extreme gentrification, is an African-American culture center being closed at such a strategic location within our community? Why is the city council supporting the revocation of a lease of a progressive black man that's focused on bringing cultural awareness to our community? Why has the city council turned its attention to this strategic location of Crenshaw and Slauson? Is it to support the current gentrification effort that is presently underway, displacing African-American citizens and interests? And lastly, what role is the city council playing with the gentrification developers that have targeted the now infamous intersection of Crenshaw and Slauson with this redevelopment?
Thank you, sir. Deborah? Is there a Micah Roberts? Please come forward. Go ahead, Deborah.
I'm here in support of the, I'm Deborah Adewale, and I'm here in support of the Afibah Center. I have been a participant at the Afibah Center for the past 20-plus years. The Afibah Center is very viable to our community. It's one of the few institutions that we have community access. There have been a number of programs there that impact us and that I have been enriched by, including health programs. I myself, as a medical practitioner, it's an opportunity to expose community, to health issues and concerns, and educate. And the Afibah Center has been very supportive in any and all activities that support our community at large. I say to Marquise Dawson that it is not acceptable to go after the Afibah Center. It is not acceptable to, to take our community center. And we will continue to fight this matter. And we look forward to a resolution of this.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Your name, sir?
My name is Tabiti Umoja, and I am a teacher in the 8th District. And also, I've been running programs at the Afibah Center for the last nine years. My main issue is trying to keep the Afibah Center open, and I think all of this could have been avoided if, if Marquise would have came down and saw what was going on at the Afibah Center. You have a Afibah Center that's running for 20 years, but you don't come by and see what's going on. And there was group meetings, focus groups, talking about what they should use the Afibah Center for. You're going to get this type of pushback when you have planning and you don't involve those people that have been creating programs. We're not important, okay? Also, there's a smear campaign going on that started the last time we were here, and we need to address that. And I'm hoping that maybe, maybe Dawson will meet with our people so that we can actually work this out. And if he can't come, maybe he should put a mannequin there so we won't look like this. But I don't know what the situation is. Okay, so we're going to be here, and hopefully we can, we can work this out. But the next time we vote, if you're going to ignore us, we're going to ignore that box that has your name next to it.
Mr. Jones? Fred Jones? Is there an Abram Farley Jr.? Okay. Mr. Jones, go ahead. One minute, sir.
Hello. My name's Fred Jones. I have been teaching African music and dance locally, nationally, internationally for about 30 years. I'm here in support of the Afibah Center, where I teach now, African drumming. And we are in the process of building a school that will serve vital needs for this community. What we do is provide for a system of music, dance, folklore, language that's needed in our community. Our community is filled with despair, gang banging. What we can do is offer programs for after-school students so they have an alternative to going out there and starting those gangs and proliferating the destruction that's so clear in our community. What we need to do is keep the Afibah Center open. I'm hearing about an eviction for the Afibah Center. We don't need an eviction. We need your cooperation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Micah Roberts? Followed by Asata Omola?
Yes, I'm Micah Roberts. I'm here to speak on behalf of the keeping open Afibah Center. I've been at the Afibah Center for over 20 years in the midst of gang violence in the Los Angeles area. I've been able to look towards the Afibah Center and the cultural center, and also the example of, of Jabari to be an, be an asset to my community. I've learned CPR. I've learned different techniques on how to build and how to be, like I said, an example in a community. I've taken a path towards gardening and working towards developing in the community. And this, this center that we have right here is pertinent for the young black youth, especially since, you know, this, there's another culture coming in. What we want is to have a center and a, an example as to how we can conduct ourselves, or else, you know, things can get crazy. Have a good day.
You too. Is there a?
My name is Abram Farley. Junior Africa Town Coalition.
Go ahead.
So-called Dawson Harris Day off. You see, he's the empty seat. He don't want to speak to us. If you have a representative here? Well, I'm here on behalf of the Afibah Center. We don't want it, we don't want it shut down. Over 25 years, it's been a great service to the community and the leadership of Jabari. We need to keep it open. And like the other guy said, there's a smear campaign that's going on. Harris Dawson, he should give us equal time to talk to the leader. And I'm going to tell you all this, get the developers out of your head, the donors, that's controlling y'all. And you know, the gentrification is kicking our, our community, tearing our businesses up. So I'm going to tell you, keep our African center open and fuck gentrification.
Okay. Is there a Asata Omola? How about an Abram Farley? Abram? That was you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Farley.
Okay, the name is Asata Umoja.
Okay, hold on, ma'am. Thank you so much. Imasawi Umoja?
Why do you wait there?
Please come forward. How about a Queenie or Shirley Ilken? Please come forward. Ms. Omola, thanks for your patience. Go ahead. One minute.
The name is Umoja.
Umoja.
Asata Umoja.
Thank you.
Okay. First thing I want to say is that I'm here on behalf of the Afibah Center, not only on behalf of the Afibah Center, but the current leadership of the Afibah Center. It is because of the current leadership of the Afibah Center that we have the type of programming that we do that empowers our community. Marquise Harris Dawson has, he calls Destination Crenshaw. I call it Devastation Crenshaw. Because he wants to use that particular project and put whatever he wants in the center when he has not properly engaged the community. The community would have a whole, perhaps, different perspective about that had he shown some respect to the community by having the community involved in this process. We must keep the Afibah Center open. It is an institution in our community that helps to empower our people under its current leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Your name, please?
My name is Kimatsawe Umoja. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. I'm, I'm here on behalf of the Afibah Center. I've gone to the Afibah Center and taken my children, since they were little children, which they're all grown now. And it has to stay. I have grandchildren that are coming along now, and I want them to be able to benefit from the Afibah Center. If it's gone, I don't know where I'll take them. So please, help us to keep it here, right where it is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Your name, ma'am?
Queenie.
Queenie, thanks for joining us. Go ahead. One minute.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am here advocating for the Afibah Center to remain in our community with our dear brother Jabari Jumani continuing to oversee it. It is needed, and it is indeed an integral part of our neighborhood, a safe space where our community residents can have safe, positive events, which in turn spreads love and positivity throughout our community. From my understanding, the construction of the Metro Rail and Crenshaw gentrification are directly related to the desire removal of the Afibah Center and other longtime black businesses in my beloved community. Marquise Harris Dawson is conveniently missing from this conversation when he's made promises to Brother Jabari regarding the Afibah Center while spreading misinformation with the same tongue in his mouth. The Metro Rail being constructed above ground in the Crenshaw District, from my understanding, when it was originally supposed to be below ground, is definitely a part of the deconstruction of our neighborhood, homes, and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley?
Yes.
And then we have one last speaker, Tiffany Jackson. Please come forward.
My name is Shirley Ilken, and I'm here on behalf of the Afibah Center. I was introduced to the Afibah Center three years ago. I used to think my community was just my neighbor on each side of me. After I started attending the Afibah Center, I found that I had a very large community, a community that was like-minded, a community that taught me more than I learned in college. We need to keep the Afibah Center there for the younger generation who's coming along after us. It's very important to our community, and it should not be destroyed because a councilman Dawson wants to use that space for something that we don't need. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a Tiffany Jackson here? Tiffany Jackson? Please come forward. Sir, did you fill out a card? You're anxious, so you're waiting to speak.
I didn't fill out a card. I have a, uh...
Okay, we'll give you a minute. Is there a Tiffany Jackson here? Okay, let, who's? Okay, go ahead, sir. I don't see a Tiffany Jackson. But go ahead, sir.
My name is Michael Hill.
Michael Hill? H.I.L.L.?
Michael Hill. H.A.L.E.
Mr. Hill. Okay. Michael Hill. Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Floor's yours.
I'm a marine vet, 40 years with the aerospace. I'm glad I came today to hear what I heard with the report they made. You know, it seemed like Los Angeles is in trouble. I came here for the Afibah Center, but I think you've heard enough about that. And, you know, you know, maybe a little suggestion, I'm not the sharpest counsel in the world, but I mean, you know, let's open the mental, mental institution back up again to Reagan clothes for these homeless people. Let, let's start training homeless people for these jobs. People say they don't have enough trained people for them. You know, let's, let's put the, let's, let's put the trades back in schools. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Okay, that concludes the general public comment portion of today's agenda. With that, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Are posted and referred. Any announcements, members? Announcements? Mr. Blumenfeld?
Yeah. Public Works Committee, which was supposed to start at 1:00, obviously did not start at 1:00, but we will start 10 minutes after adjournment, so let's say 1:45 in committee room we'll start. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements, members? Okay, can we all rise? Everyone in the chambers, please rise for adjourning motions. Okay, Mr. Keretz for adjourning motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we're surrounded by an amazing and very patient group of friends and fans of Beverly Caskey, a devoted advocate for animals who passed away on Monday, July 22nd, following a long battle with cancer. She was 71 years old. Having begun her entertainment career at Metro Golden Mayor, Beverly went on to combine her studio experience and flair for event planning and production with her love of animals to launch what became a 20-year-plus career in nonprofit, giving a voice to the voiceless. As senior director of special projects for the Humane Society of the United States, Beverly produced the animal protection organization's major fundraising galas in Los Angeles and New York. Previously, during her long tenure as senior director of HSUS's Los Angeles office, she was integral to the organization's efforts to call attention to animal causes, from puppy mills to factory farms to wildlife and much more. She spearheaded fundraising efforts to help pass ballot measures that improve the lives of animals in California, including the historic 2008 ballot measure Proposition 2 and the more recent Proposition 12, which set new standards for animals confined on factory farms. Beverly became an executive with HSUS in 2002 when it joined forces with the ARC Trust, where she had worked side by side with the organization's founder, the late Broadway star and wonderful, all-around person Gretchen Wyler. The ARC Trust's mission was to bring attention to animal issues with the motto, "Cruelty can't stand the spotlight." Beverly had joined the ARC Trust in 1996 and immediately took a leading role in planning and executing the organization's premier event, the Annual Genesis Awards, which honors those in major media and the entertainment industry who had shone a light on the plight and the rights of animals worldwide, often generating positive changes. After the ARC Trust merged with HSUS, Beverly continued to oversee every detail of the star-studded event, from gathering and reviewing of nominations to helping determine and notify the winners. Beverly brought intelligence, savvy, and compassion to everything she did. It's no surprise she was one of the most respected members of the animal welfare community, not only in Los Angeles but across the country. She started out as an assistant at MGM in 1986, eventually moving up to director of special projects, including premieres, after-parties, and screenings. She then served for one year as director of special project at the Samuel Golden Company before moving to the ARC Trust. Beverly was born in New York, but spent most of her formative years in Beverly Hills with her father, Paul Caskey, mother Augusta Caskey, and her sister Joyce, all of whom predeceased her. She is survived by her cousin Judy Lee and Judy's cousins, Adam Buchenbach and Alex Buchenbach, Beverly's brother-in-law Trevor Goring, her cousin Julie Tankinson, for whom she cared for with love and compassion throughout Julie's journey into Alzheimer's disease, and her cousin Elaine Brahman. Beverly also leaves behind her beloved rescue dogs Lola and Leo, and singer Cat Blossom, whom she inherited from Gretchen Wyler, all of which will be cared for by her longtime roommate Chris Dubrow. Even after her passing, Beverly's legacy of helping all creatures continues, and it is requested that in lieu of flowers, contributions be made to the Humane Society of the United States, the Stray Cat Alliance, or the Best Friends Animal Society. May Beverly Caskey rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Keretz. A beautiful tribute. Any others, members? Okay, seeing none, this meeting is now adjourned. Let's go forth and serve the people of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. Thank you.
He's still standing, but I wanted to thank Lieutenant Commander Simpkin, and thank you for your service. So for the last few years, this beautiful renovation has benefited greatly from the support and partnership of United Airlines. Thanks to their dedication, we're very pleased that in a couple of weeks, our Trojans will play their very first game on United Airlines Field at the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum. Now I have the pleasure of introducing Mark Krulik, Vice President.